Act like it's like a bad penny. Hopefully Brian can join us. I'm Jimmy Benjamin. I chaired the planning commission this year. And I'd like to begin by calling the meeting to order and inviting everyone to join us in a pledge of allegiance. If you could please rise, find your flag.
I have, I have a flag.
Very good. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic that we could stand, one nation.
Nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Bridget, could we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Polgar.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present with allergies.
Commissioner Holt is not hearing, I'm not hearing him. Commissioner Reddick.
Here.
And Chair Benjamin.
I'm here. Thank you very much. The agenda looks fine. Does anybody have any concerns about the order of the agenda items? Or are we good to go as is? Hearing no objections, we'll begin with our agenda. And the first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of April 28th, 2020. Colleagues, do you have any additions or corrections to those minutes? I see no, see nothing in that case unless Bridget sees some, someone raising their hand. That would, yes.
I move, we approve the minutes of the April 28th meeting.
I can give that motion. I hear from Rick, I believe.
Yes.
All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. Rick, are you, is your hand up?
Yes, I see it.
I love these virtual hands. Okay, that's unanimous for approval of minutes. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is the time in our meeting where if a member of the public wants to address the planning commission on any item that we are qualified to address, that is not on our agenda for tonight, this is the time to speak to them. If, if you're concerned and want to talk to us about an item that's on our agenda, please wait for that item and there'll be a, a period to comment on that. So with that in mind, I'd like to open the public comment period and ask if there is anyone raising their hand or otherwise signifying that they want to speak to us, Bridget.
I see none.
Going once, going twice, closed. We will consider the public comment close now and move on to our next agenda item, which is our public hearing items. The first item is an application for a lot line adjustment, and I imagine this item will be written. So I give it back to staff for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. I will share my screen for you. I have a brief PowerPoint.
We got it.
Okay, so everybody see it okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Okay, so I will go through the project details. I believe the applicant is in attendance with us tonight. I did not see her specific name on the attendee list, but I believe she was planning on being here if she would like to speak to the project once I am through the presentation, and then we will bring it back to the planning commission for clarifying questions. So the project involves the adjustment of a lot line between 613 Main Street and 612 Johnson Street. 613 Main Street is outlined in blue here and 612 in green. The adjustment of lot lines does constitute development in the city's LCP. So a coastal development permit is required to process this project. So as you can see from this aerial image, the 613 Main Street parcel is L-shaped. It has double frontages along Main Street and Johnson Street with 612 Johnson Street immediately adjacent under common ownership. A chain title review was conducted to confirm that the two parcels are indeed two separate legal parcels under the subdivision map act. This was confirmed and the parcels are legally configured as shown here. So 613 Main Street is developed with a commercial building, the MJ Betancourt Building, which is currently under retail use. As you can see in the photos here, it does have nearly zero lot lines with very narrow setback areas. So the property does currently use the Johnson Street frontage for delivery service and trash pickup. 612 Johnson Street is currently developed with a single family residence as shown in the top photo here. And in the bottom photo, you can see the gate where the delivery and trash services are accessed for the 613 Main Street commercial building. So the existing configuration of 613 Main Street is split zones between commercial downtown in the pink and R1 B2, a single family residential in the yellow. 612 Johnson Street is fully in the residential zoning district, but it is non-conforming due to lot area and lot width. So this is the proposed configuration with 613 Main Street being fully fronting Main Street and fully within the CD and commercial downtown zoning district with 12 Johnson Street being brought into conformance with the R1 B2 zoning districts. It will, as proposed, it will meet the minimum lot area and lot width requirements of R1 B2. So the city's subdivision ordinance provides criteria for review of such lot line adjustment projects. The criteria includes suitability of the, of any building sites that are created by the lot line adjustment, the provision of adequate access to the lots affected by the lot line adjustment, review of any change to any existing non-conforming lots, and the adequacy of any existing easements or the need for any additional easements to ensure that essential services can be provided to the site. So for suitability, there are no new building sites created by this proposal and the reconfiguration, reconfiguration will not adversely affect the existing commercial or residential land uses. And the two parcels are located on fully improved streets with sufficient access for pedestrians, vehicles and emergency vehicles. The existing non-conforming lot, as mentioned, will be brought into conformance with the residential zoning district and the reconfiguration will resolve the split zoning. So this project does improve conformity with the city's LCP. And for easements, as I mentioned, the commercial building does use the Johnson Street frontage to access the rear of the commercial building. The staff is recommending a condition of approval requiring recordation of a private access easement prior to recordation of the lot line adjustment to ensure that these essential services can be provided to the main street building in perpetuity. This is a snapshot of the lot line adjustment plot showing where the easement area will be located. It is proposed in the 15-foot wide area of the existing driveway on the Johnson Street frontage. And as the project requires a coastal development permit, we must consider its conformance with our land use plan of note. The subject sites are located in the old downtown visual resource area, but there is no physical development proposed with this lot line adjustment and no structures, no other visual changes. The project is found to be categorically exempt from CEQA under section 15305A, which exempts minor lot line adjustments that do not result in the creation of new parcels where there is no change in land user density and no slopes over 20%. To conclude, the project does resolve a existing split zoning condition. It will bring 612 Johnson Street into conformance with the R1 B2 zoning district. It is in conformance with the city's LCP and is categorically exempt from CEQA. The recommended motion is here on this slide and staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Brittany. Colleagues, do you have any questions that you'd like to post to staff before we have the public hearing on this item? The heads I can see are shaking. No. Anybody got a hand up that I don't see? Okay, in that case, I'd like to open the, the public hearing on this item. If the applicant is here and wishes to speak, this would be the time to do that. Does the applicant wish to speak on this item? Bridget? You're muted. Bridget, you're muted.
I thought I unmuted myself. I'm sorry. There's no one. I don't see anything and anyone raising their hands in the attendees.
Okay, in that case, I will close the public hearing again and bring it back to the commission. Colleagues, do you have any thoughts on this item?
I was hoping the applicant would be here because I was curious as to why they're going through this process right now. If there's no planned development, what's the purpose of adjusting all of this right now?
Brittany, do you want to conjecture?
I can conjecture.
Our understanding is that the purpose of the lot line adjustment is for state planning.
Got it. Okay.
Fair enough. Any other questions?
The only other question I had was just to confirm that the proposal will include the, the access, the easement with the legal, the redrawing of the lot line.
Brittany, I believe it will include the easement, right?
Yes, the conditions of approval do require the easement to be recorded and shown to the city that it has been recorded prior to the lot line adjustment being recorded itself.
I think he's probably asking that question for the same reason I wondered because in the map it said that this will be implemented by another document. There was some reference to a separate document, but I'm sure that's what the recorder will get. I did have a question, which, well, I'm sorry, Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. Yes, Jim, Chairman, I did have that concern for that reason, but I also have a secondary reason, which is in the past, we've had issues with documents not getting recorded correctly when there was a requirement to do so, and it would be a severe imposition on the other property if this easement is not properly recorded. So I just want to make sure that we take great care to follow through with this.
Okay, that sounds great. I also find myself wondering about the ministerial quality of this since the coastal act envisions that lot line and adjustments are developed and subject to development controls. It made me pause briefly to consider why, if it was ministerial, we would even bother having it as a development under the coastal act. But I conjecture that that is because some types of lot line adjustments could create different building entitlements or create intensifications of use. That does not seem to be the case here, other than to bring something into greater conformance. But if there's any other important reason, I'd like, I'd like to hear it from staff. That's my only point of thought on why it's here.
I'll chime in. The subdivision ordinance of our municipal code does describe lot line adjustments as typically ministerial actions. Our zoning code, chapter 18 of the municipal code, requires that lot line adjustments obtain a CDP for, for approval. So it is not ministerial in the coastal zone.
Right. Okay, very clear. And I think with that, unless there are no other, oh, Jill, did you have additional thoughts?
We only wanted to note that along the lines of Chair Benjamin, some lot line adjustments could create more development potential. Sometimes it's neutral and sometimes it's less. In this case, it's somewhere between less and neutral. This is not an adjustment that will enable a significant new build out for this property, either, either of the lots.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other comments from staff or comments from the commission? And if not, could I please have a motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, I move, we approve the resolution at hand, subject to the conditions of approval included in it.
The only other change I would make is in item A4, there's a typo. It said that would be easement was to facilitate, I meant to say to facilitate delivery. And in fact, it just said deliver. So you might want to pop the Y in there, assuming you have no objection to that.
Yeah.
Is there a second to his motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Polgar. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand so that we can see that you're in support. Is Rick's hand up?
Yes. Yeah, so we have Commissioner, I can just do a roll call if it's easier. I don't know.
Sure, that's fine.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Reddick?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Yes. So that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item of business for us tonight is a coastal development permit for the, to allow the, oh, and architectural review to allow the construction of a new home of 6,438 square feet, single family residence on 31,699 square feet site. And that item will be taken by Scott. Good evening, Scott.
Mute myself. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. Nice to see you all this evening. I have a short PowerPoint presentation that Bridget's gonna advance the slides for me.
Yes, just give me one second.
Okay. Pardon me, just as a point of order, Scott, I noticed that Brian has joined the meeting. If he was here earlier, I wanted to invite his vote. More the merrier.
I'm here. Sorry, I apologize for being late.
No worries. If you were here in time for the lot line adjustment item, did you want to add your vote for the record?
No, I'll abstain. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the forbearance, Scott. Carry on.
So this is an item that the, most of you have seen at least once. It was an item continued to date uncertain on April 9th, 2019, planning commission hearing. And primarily due to concerns about neighborhood compatibility related to the massing of the new home as well as drainage concerns. Since that time, the project has been revised to include a basement, removal of the western wing of the house, breezeway and guest house. And the, the changes reduced the overall footprint of the new building. But with the addition of the basement, it increased the overall square footage. Next slide, please. The next slide shows the site and surrounding area. And the site is currently vacant with minor vegetation, including ground cover, as well as mature conifer trees that line the southern property line as well as the western portion. The Pullman drainage runs along the northern edge of the property and the neighborhood of the north is partially developed with predominantly two-story homes. Next slide. Key points for the planning commission to consider: design compatibility, drainage and grading, and adequacy of the previously adopted CEQA documents. Next slide. This slide shows the previous site plan and notice that the, the home and garage is essentially one building. And then the next slide will show the new site plan, which shows two distinct buildings. The, the, the home on the, on the right as well as the detached garage on the left. The driveway stays relatively the same, but the guest house has been removed off the western side. This slide shows the front elevation as it faces Champs-Élysées Boulevard and no major change has been made to this elevation compared to the old design. Similarly, the rear elevation, the western elevation that faces state parkland and the coastal trail, only minor changes. This is the, the previous western elevation and then the next slide will show the new one.
Sorry.
Yeah, relatively.
Excuse me, Scott, point of order, Bridget, did you need to join?
No, I'm sorry. I was just, I, I jumped ahead. I'm sorry. We're, we're learning at this hole.
Very good. I'm sorry.
So this is the proposed western elevation. Notice that it does include the solar panels, which now is a code requirement. All new residential units require a solar system. So that's nice to see. And then moving on, the north elevation, this is the elevation where you could really see the difference between the old design on the top. see the difference between the old design on the top and then, or the new design on the top and the old design on the bottom. And the new design shows two distinct buildings. And then the south elevation, based in the farmland, again, you could see the old design on the bottom that's essentially one building, and the new design on the top that includes the detached garage. The proposed roof plan, again, you can see the the solar panels, as well as the uh outside terrace uh with the steps leading up to the table that you see there. Uh, and that does count as lot coverage, uh, even though it's uh technically not enclosed space. Uh, that did meet our definition of lot coverage. And then the proposed landscape plan was also updated uh to include more detail uh as well as uh no large trees, but they have included uh many riparian uh plants that are commonly seen in our riparian areas. And then the next slide is the western portion of the boat, the revised landscape plan uh that respects the further restriction area as indicated in the settlement agreement that's associated with this property. Now, as far as grading and drainage, uh, since uh they have added a basement, uh, the the grading plan does show an approximate export of nine hundred cubic yards of soil. And as proposed, the exported soil uh would be tested and deposited on the agricultural fields to the south. And the approach to this is that it would benefit uh the agricultural operations that currently take place in that area. Now, we have included a condition of approval that would require testing of the exported soil. Also, as a condition of approval, soil export uh would not be allowed through the uh existing neighborhood to the north. Now, we did receive uh some comments uh and concerns about the uh this, the approach to the the soil exports, and uh copies of the the comments received are uh have been distributed to all of you and are available on our website. Next slide shows the drainage analysis, and uh the idea is that the uh the stormwater collected from the new impervious surface and the the uh the basement would be deposited into a series of drywells uh which are indicated as as black dots, as you can see on this plan, uh, as well as the next slide. And given the size of the lot, uh, there there are clearly options as far as complying with the stormwater management requirements. And the goal, of course, is to detain the the stormwater in sight, on site, and uh keep it away from uh the Pullman Water Course. Comments were also received expressing concerns about the possibility of uh continual extended periods of time of uh pumping from the uh proposed basement during uh rainy season, uh, given the the location of the the water table in relation to the the proposed depth of the basement. Uh, again, on this slide, you see the the westernmost drywell with a black dot, uh, go back one. And then the grading and drainage plan also respects the uh further restriction area uh as um indicated in the settlement agreement associated with this pro- this property. And then.
Do any of them?
In summary, uh, the massing of the revised home uh seems to address the uh the concerns that were brought up at the previous planning commission meeting. Uh, one letter and several comments were received this afternoon uh on the project. Uh, mostly, uh, the comments related to concerns regarding the the basement and adequacy of the drainage, as well as the deposition of the soil to the south, uh, with some design concerns with uh, you know, s- some of the residents still. We also received a late email from coastal staff uh with concerns about willows in the vicinity and in relation to uh wetland buffer, and they are asking for additional wetland analysis in the area. Uh, with that, I uh, we recommend the planning commission provide uh the applicant to uh an opportunity to speak, uh, take public comment, and evaluate the merits of the project. Uh, I would, I would be happy to answer any questions, and uh the the applicant would like a uh an opportunity to speak as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation, Scott. Um, first, I'd like to invite uh my colleagues to pose any questions to clarify the project before we uh open the public hearing and hear from the applicant. If there's a particular topic you want the applicant to address in their comments, perhaps you could drop that out as well, so we'd be able to maximize the effectiveness of our dialogue. So who would like to begin? Do we have any upraised hands?
Yeah.
Okay, Sarah's hands I saw first. So Commissioner Polgar.
Yes, I had um two clarifying questions at this point. One is um in the last bit of that presentation, it, I didn't understand who had submitted questions about the willows and the wetland buffer. Um, and then uh the other question is actually related to where the pump, I didn't understand from the 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 uh presentation that kind of compared with what I was reading, as to when the pumping the is happening with the, from the um groundwater to to reduce the groundwater around the the basement, where that water is going. I didn't really, it may sound very basic, but I didn't really understand what where that was headed supposed to go. So those are my two clarifying questions.
Yes, I'd be happy to answer them. So we did receive an email from staff at the California Coastal Commission uh in regard to concerns about potential wetlands in the area, and they are asking for additional anal- biological analysis related to wetlands uh above and beyond what's already been done. So um, and a copy of that email uh will be provided to you. Uh, in regard to the pumping, uh, they, the design of for the um drainage of the basement is for mechanical pumping, because they there uh there isn't the 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 rise and run available to for gravity. Uh, and there's a backup pump system that's included with the grading and drainage plan. Uh, and the uh that would um pump out any water from the basement into drywells located further west. Uh, and we do have engineering staff uh logged in this evening. Uh, they may be able to add to add to that as well. That's the general idea behind it.
Sarah, do you want to hear from Maz on that subject now, or what's your pleasure?
Um, I am interested in understanding how, because I feel like this is an analysis that um is different than kind of the other types of drainage, site drainage analyses that we've seen because of this, you know, sub like the pumping groundwater, you know, pumping basically. And so I am curious as to how that analysis is done to determine the capacity, whether there's sufficient capacity in those drywells. Um, and and kind of, because it seems to me it's a bit different than the other, um, than just the surface runoff. Um, so if there is kind of additional information about that, I would be interested in it. It may be that that's not appropriate at this time. But yeah, I am interested in clarifying that a little bit, going a little bit deeper.
With, thank you. With respect to that question, I would like to add clarif- clarity on the understanding uh the management of the proposed pumping system with respect to uh groundwater flows. So if I can piggyback on Sarah's question, and uh maybe that will make it easier for Maz to integrate that subject into the discussion. Can you enlighten us, Maz?
I'm sure. Oh, actually, before I jump in, Evelyn Moran, our assistant engineer, she she has, uh, she wants to talk a little bit about the about the drainage on this, and then I'll jump in and finish up.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Evelyn.
Hi, good evening. Um, so I did a, I did the the review for this project, and over the course of three reviews, um, the the plans changed a bit because of the uh basement. Um, initial, initially, we did the review for uh low-impact development. Uh, it is under ten thousand square feet, so it qualifies for a low-impact development design. And then over the course, it changed. And because the water table is at twelve feet, um, they needed a mechanical system to pump out some of the water during um an elevated um water table during like a wet season or or something like that. Um, and because of that, um, they do, they did submit um hydraulic calculations for their uh development of their driveway and their building, and they do um meet the requirements for the sizing um for their drywells to meet the um outflow of the system. Um, they did delineate, they did delineate their surf, their impervious surface, their flow paths. Um, so they did meet those requirements also. The, I guess the gist of it is, um, you know, we want to eliminate, we want to have the peak runoff flow and volumes to be equal to or um as close enough, I guess you could say, um, to post, post-development and um pre- previous development. So um, I I know that the deepest part of the basement um has the, one of the drains is about eight feet, and um the water table was at twelve, and it did rise to eight feet, but um it would only, there would only be flow periods um during elevated moisture.
And thanks, Evelyn. And just to add on to that, um, the way that the system was designed for this application is that the roof leaders, rainwater leaders are actually separate from the basement piece. So um you do have positive drainage uh away from uh the uh any rainwater on the roof. However, the basement piece um has that uh complication. The recommendation in the um supplemental um uh geotechnical write-up did mention that uh different construction methods and materials need to be used for the basement uh walls. Um, and so there is that that piece of it. Um, but overall, um, they've taken into account some of the challenges that are around there. They have approximately two borings, and during the, in the initial geotechnical that was done in twenty seventeen, um, as Evelyn mentioned, it was um, and it was noticed at twelve feet deep at first, and it did rise to about eight feet below ground before it subsided. Um, and I do want to mention that the project soils engineer is in attendance, um, and so they may want to touch on this a little bit more as well.
Uh, thank you both. Um, I'm not sure, yeah, it may be that we want to flesh out more uh substance. Maybe that's a good initial inquiry about the project. Um, you know, I don't want to drill down too deeply. Sorry for that bad pun. Um, I I'm sure that happens to the soil engineer all the time. Um, but uh, uh, maybe we can come back and address that. I also want to give the applicant a chance to weigh in at some point in conjunction with whatever other items come up during questions.
I did want to mention one thing. Um, so the mechanical system will um right, will get the water up to ground um elevation, and then it will um gravity flow to the drywell. So it won't, it it won't be constantly pumping it to the drywell. So there is a point where it would shut off, and then it would uh gravity flow towards the drywell.
Okay, thank you very much, Evelyn. Um, Sarah, did you have additional questions at this time, or if not, maybe uh you'll yield to Commissioner Ruddick?
Thank you, Chair. I, the quest, a clarifying question for Scott, please. Um, Scott, in the staff report, we, it reads that the uh, the the engineering staff has reviewed and been satisfied with the the grading and drainage plans, but also that final grading and drainage plans are to come in the future with the building permit application. So could, could you describe the difference between the the status of the plans today and what is expected later on?
Yes, so normally, uh, when an applicant submits for their building permit, uh, there are more details and um the plans are more fleshed out, so to speak. But there's, the project doesn't necessarily change, but more details are associated with the the civil plans that are submitted with the building permit. So.
But presumably, the plans as they exist today are are such that, as as you have written here, engineering staff is happy with them.
Yes, that's correct. So, but um.
Their detail will be now. Scott. I'll, I'll just, can I, may I jump in real quick?
Sure.
So just, um, Commissioner Ruddick, just to mention, um, so on the, for planning level design, um, this, this, uh, the grading plans do meet the general intent of 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 the project and what we're looking for. Now, um, as Scott mentioned, there are specific details that will get flushed out with the um, the grading permit application. Um, we will go into more details about the earthwork movement. Um, we may do some minor adjustments to um the this uh drainage design, um, and some small tweaks here and there. But this phase, basically, we want to make sure that what's being proposed can, is is achievable uh with some minor tweaks. Um, and that's, that was the intent of this, this phase. So once the approval process moves forward, they, and and if they get to an a, a building application phase, then they would come back for more uh design level review.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Steve?
No, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Commissioner Holt, did you want to weigh in?
Uh, just a quick question. I think this is either for uh for Winter or Jill. Um, so does our, our zoning code, does it establish any specific parameters around um occupancy requirements, or um sort of describe to me how um, I guess, the difference between a a primary residence and a, and I guess an accessory dwelling, um, how those sorts of things are zoning code definition kind of square with each other?
I'll start and uh give Winter a chance to follow up. Uh, the zoning code for residential development is not going to specify uh anything beyond it being a particular land use, such as a single-family home, or multifamily development, like a duplex, triplex, or house with an accessory dwelling unit. We are uh considering the configuration of residency to be a household, which is um per state law. And um, so, so no, if it's rental or if it's ownership, um, we're really not going to be uh considering that with a decision about developing the property for um a single-family home.
So if a, if a single-family home was developed and, say, occupied for one, two weekends a month, that's still a a primary residence or a, uh, if it's really considered an accessory use, that's a, just a dwelling unit per our code.
Yeah, I I'll just add that there aren't any sort of mandatory uh time occupancy requirements, how long you have to actually, um, how many days you you have to be uh in the unit. I think in past planning commission meetings, we've talked about, um, you know, looking forward and thinking about um, you know, a model of uh, you know, vacancy uh ordinances and things like that. But currently, there's nothing uh in the zoning code along those lines.
Yeah, thank you. Then that's all my questions right now, Jim.
Okay, thank you very much, Brian. Um, Rick, did you want to ask some clarifying questions?
Yeah, I had uh two questions. So the first one was um in relation to the comments by the coastal commission. Um, I I'd like to just get a sort of a deeper understanding of what specifically the coastal commission was looking for, and the uh engineering departments or the public works department's reaction to those comments. Uh, where I'm going with this is, is this something we need to resolve at this level, or is this something where, based on the work that's already been done, we, the recommendation is still to move on? I just want to understand the obligation we have and the professional recommendation from the engineering.
I just want to understand the obligation we have and the professional recommendation from the engineering team. And then I have a second question after that.
Steph, I'm, I'm going to jump in just real quick, Scott, because I, one thing I think everyone should understand is we just got this email pretty late in the day today. And that's why you haven't received it yet. It's very short and it's not very explanatory. We are concerned that we didn't get to have a chance to have dialogue with our colleagues out of the San Francisco office. There's a long history of assessments along this particular ditch. And in fact, Scott did a really in-depth compilation of all those studies that have, had ever been done before at the request of this commission a couple of years back. And I know that they were shared with the commission, but I'm not sure that, that they relied back upon that. And so we were surprised by the comment. And Scott can talk to you about the original assessment of the area and then the follow-up. And I like, you know, I just wanted to frame that, that this was, this was new information to us and it surprised us a little bit. And so Scott, why don't you share with the commission what has been looked at on the property?
Yes, I mean, so, so back when the, the original tentative parcel map was reviewed by the commission, there was a biological resource evaluation that was prepared with mitigation measures. And that led to the preparation of initial study mitigated negative declaration. And that was adopted by the commission for the, the parcel map. Once this house was submitted, we asked for, we had a, an update to that report prepared. And it did not show any additional mitigation measures required, meaning that the previous report was adequate for moving forward with the new house. And both of those documents were attached to the staff report for the April 9th, 2019 planning commission meeting. Coastal staff, we did receive a couple of questions about the reports earlier in the day from coastal staff. And they primarily, primarily deal with asking about the willows that are along Alameda, north of the Pullman Water Course. So as Joe mentioned, and there is a previous report that was, analyzes the willows within that area. So that's, that's certainly something that we'll provide to them. So.
You need anything else, Rick? I, I guess my question to Maz and company is, have you had a chance to determine an opinion on the comments? Is there any work that needs to be taken by Public Works or from an engineering perspective?
Commissioner Hernandez, I'll just mention that I haven't had a chance to really delve into those comments quite yet. I know there's, there are, there are some things that we would probably want to ask the staff a little bit more. But I haven't had a chance to really, we haven't really had a chance to delve into that quite yet. So my apologies, I don't have much to respond to at this moment.
Okay, I mean, we got a late letter from the commission. There's not a lot you can do. The second question I had was with respect to the nature of the footpaths around the property. You know, when I look at the paper lots, they look like, you know, the, that are on the city map. It looks like there's, you know, a theoretical cross street where Water Course goes. So my question is, the footpaths that are there, are those going to be private footpaths? Or are those public footpaths? Is there any plan for a sidewalk of any type? Or is there any type of public access to this? And then related to that, I, I believe I understood from the plans that there's some sort of wall in front of one of the, the, the footpaths on the southern, looking from the southern side of the property. I just wanted to confirm that, that wall, if there was in fact one.
If I may, there is a swale that's proposed along the edge of the driveway. I don't know if that's what you're seeing, what you thought might be a wall.
There's no proposal for a wall.
Not that I'm aware of. So.
And if, if the applicant chose to put a wall up there, they could put up a six-foot wall, which is standard to what the city would normally allow on a lot like this.
On the southern side, yes.
Okay. These are, these are private paths. These are not public access points. This is, there's, and there's, other than the circle, traffic circle, there's no kind of intent to have any kind of public access here, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, those are my questions.
Okay, colleagues of Kiel and Dolchman, I have a few additional questions. In the, the arborist report that came with the project that described a number of trees that were dead or, you know, in various stages of health. I went down to look at the, the lot and the story poles today. So I could see the differences that Scott showed us in massing his pictures. And although it wasn't the subject of my visit, I couldn't help noticing that at the the western end of the parcel, maybe it's beyond this parcel, I'm not sure, but along Pullman, at the western protected area, the cypress trees that are sort of closest to the coastal trail have had pretty significant surgery on them. And they've basically lost all their foliage. They've been cut back to, not all the way to trunks, but to trunks and large limbs, but no foliage at all. And I'm envisioning that that is not what the arborist was recommending. But I just wanted to be clear about this is somewhat extracurricular idea. This wasn't what was recommended, because that wouldn't have happened before the CDP were approved.
And if you do take a, if you notice on the topographic survey that was included with the plan set, it does appear that the trees that you're referencing are on the subject property within the further restriction area. And it, it was not authorized to, to, for the, the trimming back of the trees like you noticed this afternoon. So what we've done is we've, we, we are, we have engaged with our code enforcement community preservation officer to help us investigate what took place with the tree, tree trimming. So.
Yeah, and I didn't need to suggest that I needed a resolution here. We're just asking questions. And I wanted to be sure I wasn't misreading the arborist report. So I didn't need to push you into what are you doing about it? Maybe we'll talk about that later, but thank you for, for that. There was a, a comment from the public about hours of construction. And can you just remind us what are the hours of construction off of this project?
Yes, it's kind of for all construction projects within Half Moon Bay. It's from eight to six, Monday through Friday. And then, let's see, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's nine to five on Saturdays and then 10 to five on Sundays.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to ask about the, maybe I can come back to Maz just to try to get additional clarification. I understand that the sumps are going to be effective at protecting the structure from the intrusion of water. And I also understand that it's, it's pumping into the dry wells. As I understand it, the dry wells have a connection in the case that they overflow, say beyond the two hours of the storm, the 10-year storm, that it has a connection through an energy dissipator bubble up that eventually can go to the Pullman Water Course. Is that correct?
I believe that is the case.
Okay. And those were sized after the basement was added, so they have the capacity, they reflect a capacity that includes the additional flows from the basement. They've changed the pump sizes or the well sizes or all of the above. Is that correct?
That's correct. The project designer went through and, and sized the dry wells accordingly to the proposed basements.
And given that the basement is so close to the groundwater levels, my, and again, I don't want to get into discussion of the value of the item. So this is, I'm trying to stay very technical here. My understanding is that the, the water level fluctuates. And while part of the water eventually drains out, part of it recharges through capillary action. In other words, there's a, a subtle ground flow that does lots of different things. I'm trying to understand independently of whether more water going into Pullman or not, whether we are changing the, the pattern of ground flow or whether the models are enough for us to understand that.
Yeah, I, I would agree with, I would have to say on that particular piece, it's, it doesn't go into geomorphology or anything of that nature. It doesn't really talk, the soils report doesn't talk too much about the impacts of, of, of of the project to the groundwater resources. So it is a little bit unclear from that perspective. We would have, when we get, if we get to the next phase, that would have been some of the questions that we had on.
I, I get it. I get it. That would, that answers my question. Thank you. I also noticed that the plans that were delivered by Tara, it went out to C4, but they didn't include C5, which is the drainage plan. The copy that came by email did include C5. That's page 95 of your PDF for those of you following from home. And it had a reference that said that the, and the reason I'm asking the question is that it said that the, the analysis was based on the assumption of sheet flow, well, it didn't use the word sheet flow, but runoff from the driveway and the roof structures. And it didn't anticipate things like basements. So I wanted to be sure that the plans that we're looking at are consistent with the analysis that's taking place. It may just be, but it was a, an omission from a modification of the, of C, of H, C5 that needed to reflect that. I'd like to turn to the subject of the excavated soils. I understand the cubic yards that are being moved. And I, I would like to be clear, the location to which the prop, the soils, they're proposing to move the soils is actually away from this lot. It's actually in the surf dunes PUB. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the, the, the belief, or at least at this point, the suggestion is that there's, is that the 974 cubic feet are prime soils.
So that is unclear at this point. We did add a condition of approval requiring testing of the excavated soil. But it's, we don't know that for sure at this point.
I see. Okay. I think I did have some, some other topics, but I'd rather hold on to them and give the public who's been very patient and the applicant who's been very patient, an opportunity to speak. Did anybody, oh, yes, Sarah, you had a follow-up question?
Yeah, this, this follows from, sorry to step back, but the comment or that Scott you made asking, mentioning that the mitigated negative deck, deck report was updated for this project. But that is my, I didn't think, that, that sounded like it was back in April for that previous meeting. So it hasn't been, there was no kind of review in that process, like is, as far as the environmental review, like the kind of transparent public process that included this kind of the basement, the, the 900 some cubic excavation, the plant, you know, and like what might happen with drainage or groundwater or things like, you know, or, you know, other issues also. So that wasn't in the SEQA review. Am I correct?
Just to, just to clarify, the biological resource evaluation was reevaluated. And an update letter was provided explaining that there was no additional foreseeable impact on biological resources. The, the neck deck was adopted and we are recommending a SEQA exemption for the new house. So no additional SEQA analysis was done because the, the neck deck was adopted. And, you know, for, for additional information, I think Winter could, could provide additional information if possible.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, if that would be helpful. As Scott was just saying, this is a somewhat unusual, not totally unusual, but situation where we do have a negative declaration that was done for the prior subdivision that analyzed, you know, a number of the kind of environmental impacts associated with typical development of the subdivision. Since then, you know, now what is being proposed now is a single family home. And of course, there is an exemption, categorical exemption under SEQA for single family homes. There are additionally exceptions to the exemption under certain circumstances. And in, you know, in this case, you know, we felt that there, there wasn't really call to invoke the exceptions to the exemption, although, you know, obviously there's, there are a number of questions that have, have been raised and are to be considered tonight about potential impacts from the, from the basement. But typically, a single family home would fall under the categorical exemption for small development.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Thank you, Rick. You may.
What is, Winter, what are this? What are some of the applicable conditions that would merit a SEQA for, a SEQA review, a formal SEQA process for this particular property? So you indicated the initial analysis said this wasn't applicable. But there, you, you mentioned one scenario, which is the potential water issues with the basement might merit SEQA analysis. Could, could you elaborate a little bit on that for us, please?
Rick, if I can, if I can just frame the question, I think you're asking about supplementary SEQA analysis. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Well, and I would actually frame it under the exceptions to the exemption, which is at guideline section 15, 300.2. And I think this is perhaps what you were getting at, Commissioner Hernandez. There, so, you know, we, we all know there are exemptions, categorical exemptions to SEQA where you just don't need to do any environmental review for certain categories of activities. Single family home is typically considered one of those activities. There are of course exceptions to that. And one is if there's a reasonable possibility that the activity will have a significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances. So I think, you know, as we were reviewing the, the project coming into tonight, we actually saw it as sort of having a belts and suspenders approach because there was an original negative declaration that provided some comfort that these exceptions to the exemption didn't apply. And there's the single family home exemption that would cover a project like this. And as you note, there are, you know, questions for the planning commission to consider about whether that, that analysis could use to be supplemented. Maybe some questions asked just to make sure that there aren't any of these unusual circumstances that could have a significant effect.
Was that good for you, Rick?
Thank you. As always, you make us sound way more intelligent than we intended.
All right. If there, do we? If there, do we have any other questions from the colleagues here? I'm tempted to ask some questions about the relocation of the, of the lot fill. But I think I'll wait for the time being because I would like to return to that. I'm not sure. I think the questions might be framed better after we've had an opportunity to hear from the applicant and the public. But that's a subject of great interest to me at this time. If there's no other questions, I'd like to open the public hearing. Yeah, well, and invite the applicant to share his thoughts or her thoughts. So Scott, I don't know if we have the applicant online, but if we do, help me find him and I look for her and I'm working forward to hearing their thoughts.
Okay, so I think we're gonna allow Mark Messera to speak first, I believe. So I'm going to unmute him currently. So just give me one moment.
Can you hear me?
Okay, there's Mark. You're on. Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chairman Benjamin and members of the planning commission. I hope you had a safe and relaxing Memorial Day holiday. It certainly is a privilege to be able to participate in your meeting tonight, as tricky as it is during this pandemic. I only wish that we could be in the same room. But nevertheless, we greatly appreciate your thoughtful input and questions and suggestions and your willingness and the hard work of your staff to go to these lengths to keep your hearings public and ongoing. Given the great many issues and questions that have been raised, I'd like to request ten minutes for this initial presentation and an opportunity for rebuttal at the conclusion of the public testimony. As Bridgette said, I'm Mark Messara and I represent the applicant. But I'm not alone tonight. Actually, first I'd like to address the comment from the chair about the trees. I can assure you that there has been no authorization to cut any foliage or vegetation on this lot by the applicant. And I know that State Parks has been doing some work down closer to the coastal trail. And we're certainly more than willing to coordinate with your staff on an investigation. And I would just, you know, say for the public record that in California, timber trespass is considered to be a very significant and serious civil offense with treble damages. So I'm certainly not happy to hear about tree trimming, especially if it's on this property.
Thank you, Mr. Messara. I'm very familiar with that treble damages for unauthorized tree trimming on one's property. Carry on.
Very good. I'm pleased to say that I'm not alone tonight. Due to the guidance that your staff has provided and your own suggestions at the April hearing last year and the diligence and collaboration and public input that we've gotten, we have civil and geotechnical engineering, as well as our certified landscape architect here tonight. And first, and hopefully following me will be Chris Ridgeway, the architect who has done lots of work here in Half Moon Bay. And for you are no doubt well know his outstanding and sensitive design work. Just as important, our engineers, Kevin Weiss and Oscar Gomez at JMH Weiss Engineers, who've done literally thousands of retail, commercial and residential projects throughout the United States. As you'll see from their plans, the details that have gone into this project at this level with the CDP are in general considerable and generally far surpass those of other residential projects that would regularly be presented to your commission at this planning phase of a house project. Kevin is here and will address any questions that you might have regarding surface water issues. In addition to the civil engineering, Daniel Dykman of Geo Forensics, who is both a civil engineer and a geotechnical engineer and who has been working with your staff, has provided additional analysis and certainty regarding the below grade improvements associated with the project and protecting public and private neighborhood views in the area. And Dan can address any questions related to subsurface water flows related to the project. And lastly, you'll probably also recognize certified landscape architect Bruce Chan, who has prepared the landscape plans. He's reviewed the arborist plan and sought to ensure protection and propagation of native plants throughout the project and lot, and protection of areas associated with the Pullman ditch and to ensure that best management practices and compliance with the Half Moon Bay Welo planning requirements are achieved. Bruce can address any questions regarding the landscape, trees, protection of the trees in the arborist report. So as you can see, we've worked very closely with your staff to ensure that we've covered all the bases here. While there are a lot of issues that have just been raised in the last hour or so and we certainly think that we can answer the coastal commission's questions, for example, related to the long history of environmental analysis related to the Pullman water course. There are a few that were related to your last hearing and the minutes of your last hearing that we'd like to address in particular. And one is the design changes for this proposal and the project benefits that derive therefrom. What you see before you tonight is a significantly refined and redesigned project in response to comments received during your last hearing, which we believe make it a truly outstanding and groundbreaking proposal in every regard. As Chris Ridgeway will explain, the lot is exceedingly large for this area at over thirty-one thousand square feet and is much larger than virtually all the others in the neighborhood, including the other lots in the Stoloski subdivision. It's two, it's over a third larger than the two lots that a commenter this afternoon submitted materials on for the other lots in the subdivision. And that is reflected in the relatively small coverage associated with the project. The development for this proposal is just twelve point eight percent, nearly one third of the coverage associated with most other homes in the neighborhood, which often are up to thirty-five percent lot coverage. Our proposed floor area ratio, in addition, is only twenty percent, while neighbors are often as high as forty-five percent. What this means is that the proposal is able to incorporate almost unheard of natural resource protections and open space that you just don't see in this neighborhood or this area of the city. For example, the project incorporates a thirty foot setback from the Pullman water course throughout. If you look at the neighborhood and the adjacent homes, some of those homes are directly on top of the Pullman ditch and others have five feet or less as a setback. In addition, this proposal has a one hundred and fifty foot permanent open space area on the western ocean fronting edge that will remain undeveloped. Again, this is something virtually unseen in the area and provides a whole host of benefits. We've also included erosion and runoff protection per city, per city design standards that runoff will not impact the Pullman drainage. And we've also included other mitigations such as dark night sky light protections, tree protections and other elements that make the project stand out. We'd all, we'd like to take one quick moment to address in detail some of those helpful suggestions and comments that were made in the last hearing. First, and Commissioner Holt mentioned this tonight, was the occupancy related to the home. The home will be occupied full time. The applicant is a longtime avid fisherman who has a decades-long affinity for the Dunes Beach Smelt Fishery. This is a lifelong aspiration to be able to retire and fish smelt at Dunes Beach. You may know that Dunes Beach is renowned for the smelt fishery. He specifically purchased this oversized lot at this location to be able to construct a slightly larger house for his family and to be able to fulfill his love of the area and enjoy coastal amenities that are so nearby. Second, the question has come up, will the home adversely impact the Pullman water course? And the answer is emphatically no. As set forth in the building plans and the geotechnical and landscaping plans, confirmed by your staff and their analysis, the project includes a virtually unprecedented thirty foot setback from the Pullman drainage and includes a continuous uninterrupted riparian and buffer area that no other surrounding property can claim. Other homes in the area have as little as five foot setback, which I mentioned. Some have none at all. In some cases, the Pullman water course goes right under homes. When coupled with this one hundred and fifty foot open space area, over twelve thousand six hundred square feet of this parcel are protected in open space. That amount alone exceeding the entire size of most of the around surrounding lots and residential parcels. As your staff report notes on page five, a Geo Forensics engineering analysis that is confirmed by your staff finds that the house design exceeds the required standards and that, given the very large size of the lot, is more than sufficient to detain the runoff from the improvements even during storms. The third issue that has come up is will the home block views of the neighbors? This issue occupied perhaps the majority of the time at your April hearing. And the answer is, again, emphatically no. We heard all of the comments that you received last year. Following that hearing, the applicant engaged the neighbors and met with the neighbors and retained additional professional staff. And working closely with your staff, they redesigned the project, all in an effort to oblige the neighbors' concerns about protecting and enhancing their views. Not because it was legally required, these are private views, but because the applicant wanted to be a good neighbor. The result is, is a much more expensive project that requires much more engineering, but also one that has undergone significant additional engineering and provides the type of certainty that you rarely have with a planning proposal at this stage. And as your staff analysis finds, this version is much more responsive to the neighbors' concerns. You'll recall that the previous proposal was approximately a hundred and thirty-seven feet long with a garage, a guest house and a main structure attached and combined. And this current proposal eliminates the guest house and separates the garage and the main home. And now the main home is just fifty-nine feet long and the garage is only twenty-three feet long, separated by a nearly forty-foot area of space that creates enormous view corridors that, again, most other lots in the area would be unable to accommodate. It also breaks up the volume, the massing and the profile of the home significantly. More importantly, from the street, it looks to be about the same width as other houses in the neighborhood and is fronted by frankly, a gorgeous entry porch. The garden, the garage is hidden, unlike most of the neighborhood homes in the surrounding area, which is again, a benefit that's afforded by the exceedingly large lot size. These view and massing articulation benefits were conceived for largely the benefit of the neighbors. They inspired the inclusion of the below grade improvements that have undergone significant civil and geotechnical engineering reviewed in coordination with your staff. These improvements, including the work of your staff to ensure the excavated soils are compatible and will benefit the adjacent agricultural fields and which we agree to the condition in the, in the staff report, make this a singularly unique and valuable amenity, not just to the neighborhood, but to the adjacent agricultural efforts next door as well. The, the spreading of soil amendments on ag fields is a best management practice for good agricultural operations. In the final analysis, commissioners, this project is one that we're proud to present for your consideration. We've worked closely with your staff and as the report confirms, the project complies in every respect with city guidelines and the input of the interested parties. If you go back and review the minutes of your April nine, two thousand nineteen meeting, you'll see that we've addressed every part of your motion to continue. And the project today, we believe, deserves your support and approval. I and our team are online and ready to answer any questions you may have. I would like to reserve rebuttal time just in case there's any questions or concerns that are raised during the course of the rest of the hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Messara. I'd like to ask whether the commissioners have specific questions from the applicant or if staff wants to provide additional advice about direction or if you prefer that we hear from the public at this point. Not seeing any comments from you guys. So I'm going to invite the public to present their comments. They've been extraordinarily patient. And Messara, I'm sure that we'll have an opportunity for your colleagues to address questions and for you to be able to respond to some of those questions as time evolves tonight. It's an important project for us, so we're, we're to take the time to get it right. So at this time, I'd like to, I don't remember whether I opened the public hearing, so consider the public hearing open. And let's see, Bridgette, do you think the protocol should be to bring the questions that are already on the record in now or just invite the public speakers to speak?
Joel, do you want Chris Ridgeway to speak first and then we go into the following public comment?
Well, I, I think with, as Chair Benjamin noted, we have so many, so many folks here who've been watching. It sounds like we could have public comment. Staff would really like to hear all the public comment and also consider the commissioners' comments so that we can prepare responses if necessary or also suggest any other things that we should be thinking about. So we just are wanting to go along with our commission.
Okay.
All right. So why don't we go ahead with the public presentation? And you're in the best position to tell us who needs to speak and I would love to hear from them.
Okay, so if we want to just go with public comment, I'm assuming, I can just go with the next person that's on the list. All right. So the person, the next person who raised their hand was Lauren Lowe and I'm gonna go ahead and let her in here in just one second. Okay, Lauren, can you hear us?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you're, you're ready to, you're on.
This is great. So I, I really appreciate the presentations tonight, both from Mark and the staff. And I just have actually a number of questions. I'm a resident living down at three sixteen Washington Boulevard. So I'm right down the street from this property. I'm an avid biker. I, you know, explore the coastal wetlands quite a bit on my bike and, you know, on foot. And so, you know, I have a personal attachment to the area. And so just have some questions about the property itself and then the plans for the property. And so I know that in the area, my house included, and I know a lot of my neighbors' houses don't even have basements. And I know we did discuss a fair amount about the basements. I was just wondering, I guess, what are the, I mean, this might be a question more for the engineers than for anyone. But what are the materials that they're planning on using for the basements that will support, you know, coastal wetland environment? I assume all the basements are non-existent because most of them will leak or, you know, flood or something of that extent. So, yeah, I guess my question is, what are the materials that will be used for the basements? How are those materials being sourced? And what is the pumping method? I know we mentioned a little bit about the pumping earlier. But if the floodwater would be pumped out of the basement, where would it be pumped?
Just to interrupt Ms. Lowe, and I'm happy to hear the rest of your questions. So please stop the clock. I don't want to take any over time. We don't normally do question and answer during the public hearing, but we will document the question. I've been making notes as you speak, and I will be sure to fared an answer out of Mr. Masara and his colleagues and staff. So rest assured that we're hearing you, but please don't overlook our answer. Thank you.
And I'll just continue with my questions then. Another question I had was about the removal or potential removal of the mature cypress trees. I know that the cypress trees are a protected species, at least in California. So I was concerned about the removal and about the pairing in the, I think, the western part of the property. It doesn't sound like the applicant or, you know, any of his external people have removed the trees. But if the house were to be there, would any of the current cypress trees be removed? And it looks like from some of the plans that there are, you know, extra plants that are being put in the area. Are those plants native species? Are they going to affect the coastal wetlands? And how, I guess, how will it affect the coastal wetlands and the animals and other plants in that area? And let's see, another question I had was, I noticed that there were the two designs, the design beforehand and the design afterhand, I guess. And it looks like the first design, there was much more property. And then the second design, there was, you know, two disjointed properties. There was the garage and then the house. I was just curious why those decisions were made or like what compelled the architect and the owner of the land to change the design from one larger building to two different buildings? And let's see. And I also noticed that the house will have solar panels. And I don't know if this is something standard or, or not, but I was just wondering what percentage of the power that is produced by the solar panels, or I'm sorry, what percentage of the power that the owner uses will be from the solar panels? You know, is that number twenty percent? Is it a hundred percent? I think things like that really make a difference when you're considering a house that is so large and requires such a high amount of electricity. And I think that's all the questions I have for now.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Lowe. Please feel free to write in to Bridgette. She gave her email address earlier. If something else comes up, we'll, we'll try to work it in. Could we have the next speaker then?
Yes. Next speaker is Vic. I have Vic on here. And let me just, sorry, allow him to talk. Let me see if I can unmute him. Okay, Vic, you're on.
Hi, this is Susan Quaglietti, and I'm married to Vic Froelker. And I'll be presenting since we're both sharing a computer. And I live at two eight oh five Champs-Elysees. And basically, thank you for letting me make the comments. And I have three points that I'd like to make, and I have associated questions with that. So point number one, the story polls tell us again that size matters. And the planning commission is meeting to review whether to approve an almost sixty-five thousand square foot house and that the design should be meeting the municipal code that such buildings should be designed and constructed not to be unsightly or obnoxious in appearance and within orderly and harmonious development of the city. To put the size of this house proposal in perspective, a six thousand five hundred square foot structure has been used for warehouse factories the size of a Toys R Us retail store in New York City and service repair shop for motorcycles in the Midwest. So question number one, why should a structure that size be approved in a neighborhood that has personal residencies on average a little over one-third of the proposed size? Besides being an expansive structure, it is just plain big and unsightly. Like being obese, building a morbidly grandiose house is unhealthy for water damage and overall environmental footprint. Question number two, why should we have a Big Mac mansion built in the neighborhood that has other neighbors enjoying living in a normal house mass index? Point number two, the story polls whisper that intention and integrity matters. The massive size of this mansion, declared as a single-family residence, has been submitted because the builder believes he can push his agenda. John Vaicovich has persuaded other planning commission members in Santa Clara to agree with his pro spraw ideas and questionable use of land, and I made a reference to articles sent into the commission. The inflated confidence and grandiose to propose building with complete disregard for the neighbors could fill a hot air balloon the size of a thousand feet. So question number three, how can the residents of Half Moon Bay be assured that this property will be realistically function as, will not be realistically function as a bed and breakfast or an Airbnb since the proposed home has five bedrooms, each with its own bathroom, and a builder already lives in a fifteen thousand square foot villa in Los Altos Hills? The third point, the story polls know that location matters. The proposed single-family residence is conveniently close to the site of a proposed RV park to be owned by the same builder, John Vaicovich. So my last question is, how can the community determine if this house, which has a contiguous border to the RV park proposal, will not be part of the Dunes Project First Clubhouse CEO Headquarters or Corporate Center and that the land developer won't use this house to gain access onto the RV park through our cul-de-sac? If acting fairly, the planning commission will consider these points and concerns. And I thank you very much for taking this comment seriously.
Thank you, Susan, and I'm sorry I didn't catch your last name, but I'm sure staff did. So we appreciate your comments. Bridgette?
Okay, let me just do one step here. Sorry. Just need to take this person off. Okay, the next person I have is Brad Stainoid. And let me allow him to talk and take the other one off quickly here. Okay, I believe that Brad can speak right now.
Yes, hello, Brad.
Good evening.
Okay.
Chairman, commissioners, staff of the planning committee, good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak. I sent some photos actually into Bridgette, and I don't know whether she can share those with you.
I'm working on it right now.
I also want to point out, I am at twenty-eight oh one directly across the cul-de-sac from this intended home. From the causeway, and I think, I hope you know what I mean by the causeway that runs over the Pullman ditch, there are four homes within a fifty-meter radius, either under construction presently or going into proposed for construction. That's four homes within a fifty-meter radius, all within one year. That is just too much for anyone and for somebody who's going to be living in the middle of it to handle, particularly when this builder is proposing to build seven days a week. So if, I'd like to start from here. This is taken from Highway one. So if there's anything about the size of it, this is only story polls, but boy, does it stand out from Highway one. You could move on to the PDF. Yeah, that's, that's it right there. So the contention that it's of a similar size to neighboring houses, perhaps from the frontage, but it sure doesn't look that way from Highway one. Could we go to the PDF, please, Bridgette?
I think, can you see it?
I cannot at the moment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it was my page. Let me, hold on. I apologize. I thought you were able to see the PDF. Okay, can you?
I can speak to it if it's available there. Ah, here we go.
There you go. Sorry about that.
This is what I'm referring to, about four homes within the fifty-meter radius. So that is the story polls. You can see just to twenty-eight oh two. To the right of that, a home that's being completed. The, that photo is directly behind on Pullman. That's, the photo below that is the run-up to Pullman, and that's where it will be. The home to the left there that says Pullman, that's almost completed, but that's a house that's just gone up, going down. That's the front of that house that's still, you know, banging and soaring and cutting and so forth. And just to add to that, around the corner on Roosevelt, there is another house going up. So that's how much construction we have. And I did believe there was a limit to how many houses could be built in Half Moon Bay in a year, let alone in a single community. Moving on from there, I would like to speak about the ground flow of water and the water table. We moved in relatively recently, earlier this year, and in March of this year, we were tree planting. I heard that the water table varies between eight feet and twelve feet. I can tell you from digging holes in our yard, the water table in March was two feet, twenty-four inches. And so I haven't helped the engineers trying to build that, but my question is, how are they going to drain the water out of that excavation when they do it? In San Mateo County, water that comes out of basements, basements such as this has to be trucked away because you're talking about millions and millions of gallons of water. What is going to happen to that water? Where is it going to go? To that point, when the basement is built, and I believe it will be built and it'll be built soundly, I don't know whether the exterior walls will be concrete, but let's just use concrete as a, as an idiom. It's going to create a dam. So the water that actually runs, the groundwater that runs from east to west, is going to hit that basement, that dam, and cause flooding and backfill back towards my property. That's of a major concern to me. Mark, that you say that John is going to live full-time and it's a lifelong dream to live in this house, is he going to sell his fifteen thousand square foot house in the Los Altos Hills? You can come back to that for me. The soils that are going to be put on the agricultural lands. My question to the city and to Mark and to everyone else is, who actually owns that agricultural land? Is that still belonging to Mark? Does John, the applicant, own that land? Because if he does own it, he doesn't own all of it. There are private lots within there. And in fact, the private lots, the majority of them, are closest to his property. So if the soil is going to be taken out, is he going to cross private property to dump it? Because he doesn't own the property adjacent to his house. They are my primary points. I also would like to add very quickly that digging this basement is going to require earth-moving equipment that's not been seen in this neighborhood before and may not have been seen in Half Moon Bay, except perhaps for the build of the Ritz Carlton. We cannot have this going seven days a week. I mean, I don't know that anybody would like to have this sort of heavy equipment coming in and out seven days a week, the sort of heavy excavation equipment. So I, you know, I'd like to raise a serious objection to that in this case also. Did that buzz him in? My time is up, Bridgette?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brad, for your comments.
Yeah, just to let you know, I'm tracking a three-minute timer, and that's my little timer, so, sorry.
It's a very discreet little timer. I like it.
Okay, moving on, let me just move him up. Okay, we have.
For the chair.
Oh, yes, point of order. State your point of order, please.
We encourage healthy dialogue and feedback from the public, but some of the comments have bordered on ad hominem attacks. So we just encourage people to be professional and respectful of one another during the comment period.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. I will confess to thinking the same thing. I was erring on the side of free speech, but I can strongly understand your concern.
Okay, so the next person I have in line is under the name Joe Farrell, and I will allow him to speak. So let me see. Okay, so your mic should be available and on, so, Joe, you're on.
Thank you, Bridgette, and thank you, planning commissioners and staff. It's been, let's see, more than a year since we presented to you part of a PowerPoint description of the aerial pictures of the, of the first initial, first initial plans. And I would like to acknowledge Mr. Vitamits, Vitovich's efforts to reduce the size of the original design by reducing the footprint and locating three of the bedrooms and baths and a media room in the basement versus a hundred and forty-five-foot-long original house plan. It were, as Mark Masaro said, John was very forthcoming and he was looking to collaborate. That said, the building mass and the design that we see today, especially from the story polls, and I would say, just as a perspective, I'm at twenty-eight oh five Alameda. We are directly north of this house. And the thirty-foot distance between our house and theirs is twenty feet of right-of-way and then ten feet of space, buffer space that has to be. But we're very, very close to it. And thus, and the size of it is daunting. And it looks just to me, from what I can see, it evokes more of a golf clubhouse or a commercial property. It really doesn't look like it fits within the neighborhood or, quite frankly, anything I've seen in Half Moon Bay. And that's something that I just think is just out of context with this neighborhood and would ask that, you know, you take that into consideration when you look at approvals. In addition to that, the Vitovich property and two other proposed houses on Pullman in the Stalotsky subdivision are a concern because they're oversized for our neighborhood. And to that point, we recently had a real estate agent do an analysis using the realist database of fifty-six properties in West Miramar, which were properties on Washington Avenue, Pullman, Roosevelt, Champs-Elysees, and Naples, which showed an average square foot home of less than twenty-five hundred square feet. It's actually twenty-three hundred and eighty-eight square feet. And we just look at these proposed homes, and they are part of the neighborhood by the fact that the cul-de-sacs were put in and they extended the streets. And they're just, they're so far outside of what we see here that many of us feel it's an exception that should be looked at. And then the, one of the other things I want to call and want to call out is, as we all know, Mr. Vitovich is the developer of the post-controversial Dunes Beach project. The large residential structure that everyone is reviewing tonight is within a hundred and fifty feet of that project. And it seems by all appearances that the location of this new residence isn't coincidental, but it's an attempt to further Mr. Vitovich's agenda of making the Dunes Project a reality. but it's an attempt to further Mr. Vitovich's agenda of making the Dunes project a reality. And we think the size, configuration and proximity of the proposed Dunes Beach has, well, certainly has me concerned that there are intentions to use this building for something other than a residential home and using it as a place of business during the RV park build out. And I would ask you, is there a way to consider restrictions to prevent that? And then um just two last, I'll be very quick, two things. Is we are having, there's a house being built right behind us. During the foundation stage where they were building, where they were dug down four to five feet, four feet deep, they hit water uh all the time and had massive pumps going. And it, they thought it was going to take them a day. It took them a week. And this is a small house. This is like sixteen hundred square feet. I'm really concerned as a neighbor about the noise and the amount of pumping and the water that's going to happen that they are just going to have to drain out as they're putting in the foundation. And that's a, you know, it's just, I, I just saw it two, three months ago. So I don't, I don't think we're going to see all of a sudden that any, that it's anything different. I think we're going to have that, but it's going to be much larger. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Joe. Bridgette?
Okay, let me uh look up here. Um, it looks like we have next is um Thea Sullivan, and she should be able to speak right now.
Hi, this is Thea Sullivan. Thank you so much, and I would like to thank the commissioners. I don't know if you usually spend this much time on your meetings, but I'm uh just honored to be part of it and thank you so much for opening up comments for the community. Um, I am also a neighborhood, uh, neighbor in the Miramar uh neighborhood. I'm at three oh one Washington Boulevard. I have three specific questions. I'll try to keep it all under my three minutes. The first one has to do again with the um, the basement subterranean uh area. I didn't actually see any of that in the plans and it would be nice to be able to see that in more detail. Um, I am, uh, we, we are um not even as close to the Pullman ditch and yet we deal with um pumping and uh sump pumps in our small crawl space under our house constantly whenever there's rain. Um, and it's always a concern to us. So the idea of having, and I would echo some of the comments of my neighbors, an area where we have already a basement, it just seems to um again draw question, as, as Lauren mentioned earlier, how such a thing could actually function in this environment? Um, secondarily to that, not only is the drainage going to be an issue and I, I would be concerned for the homeowner that he's going to have to deal with a lot of potential damage. Um, my question is, where would all that water be going? Already with the Pullman ditch, there is already a series, a temporary barrier, and I say temporary, a little tongue-in-cheek because it's been there for a long time, uh, where some of the, that water has flooded. And that does in fact impact the coastal trail that we all depend on. And that's the accessway to the, to the uh Roosevelt Beach parking. In that area, it's already disintegrating, potentially due to the overflow, and that's probably something that your engineers are aware of. Um, so that would be a concern of mine if that water ends up going there. And if it does end up going there, I have two children that really enjoy being in the beach, uh, being in the water and um, you know, our whole family spends a lot of time there. We, we enjoy that area for the, for this reason. Um, and so I would be extra concerned about the quality of the water, which is already sometimes not the greatest um and our other residents spending time there. Um, so that's the subterranean component. My second question uh has to do with the size of the, of proposed property. And I, I ju- I know we're supposed to keep this all uh above board, but I would say I found the comments from the attorney to be um deprecating to the people who live in the neighborhood. Um, I can't hide my garage. This is the way my house was built. And um I would like to do so, but I, it's not a choice of mine. Um, I would also say that this house, I would echo some of the comments. It does seem to be very, very large for the space that we have here. Um, and truly not representative of the neighborhood um and in the spirit of Miramar. Um, the last point that I would make um is around, uh, there was a comment made at the very beginning of the meeting of the agricultural benefits that would come from moving the soil from the basement. I would appreciate some clarity around what those benefits in fact would be, um, because that didn't really seem clear to me. Um, I would also echo um that I would love to understand the relationship between the builder and where, uh, who is going to take this um, this soil and where exactly how it's going to be disposed of. I am also truly concerned about the proposed RV park. Um, our neighborhood in the last three days has undergone people parking in every spot you could possibly imagine. People are actually urinating in the neighborhood because there's no place for them to go, um, because the parks haven't opened yet. Um, and so the idea of bringing in more traffic and opening a door to additional development is, is a significant concern. So I would urge you to imp- to, as you are doing such a great job of being so diligent on the immediate design of the house, to also think about, of course, the impact on the rest of the community. So thank you very much for um letting me speak.
Thank you, Theo. Bridgette?
Okay, um, looks like the next person we have is Natalie B. And she. You can talk, you can speak, Natalie.
Hi, my name is Natalie Baldaccini. I live at four oh five Washington Boulevard.
Welcome, Nat.
Thank you. Thank you for, for taking my, my, my questions and comments. Um, I'm, I have a couple of questions. One is, what is the maximum lot size for our area? Um, another is, is there a maximum house size? And I also wonder, I mean, the um, the attorney said that he's only taking up twenty percent of his lot, which is unlike the rest of us, but I would like to point out that his lot is six hundred times larger than the rest of our lots. So um, it's, you know, it just seemed like kind of a ridiculous um thing to point out. But anyhow, um, I also wonder about, so I know that flooding is an issue for the homes all around this proposed property. And I'm concerned about the runoff from this property into the other properties that border it. As well as, as Theo pointed out, um, the, the creek that runs out to our beach. Um, that all concerns me very much. Um, and then lastly, we're a very close knit neighborhood. We all spend time together. Um, we're very lucky to be here and we're happy to hu- welcome a new neighbor, but we're not happy to have a hotel or a bed and breakfast in the middle of it. Um, so those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Natalie.
Next, uh, next we have Terry Dufour, and I apologize if I messed up that. Um, and she'll be able to talk.
Pronounced my name perfectly.
Uh, thank you.
So.
Oops, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. I'm sorry. I apologize. I pick y'all.
That's okay. I have somebody in my household that would love to be able to push the mute button once in a while. First, I just have to. Thank you, especially with COVID nineteen. Thank you for, for taking all of our comments. Um, and I just have to say, Mr. Chair, I kind of love the fact that your gavel is a hammer. That was a really.
Pickaxe, but I appreciate the sentiment.
Oh, a pickaxe, yeah. Well, I'm starting to do more gardening now that I have a little more time on my ass with COVID nineteen, so I should know the difference. So.
If it gets hard attacking, I'll bring a peaton.
Yeah, there you go. So I, I really appreciate all of the discussion that happened on the front end about um how they were going to deal with the subterranean um area. And I understand that that was definitely in response to early neighbor comments about views and other things in the neighborhood. So I appreciate the effort there. I just have two major concerns. And the first is, like my neighbors, and I've lived here thirty years. So I, I feel very invested in this neighborhood. And I know that we have had periodic problems with flooding and sump pumps in our, in our sub-basements all this time. And I am sure that there's probably going to be more due diligence to building this than there has been to a number of other things that have been done. But as we all know, there are lots of unintended, unintended consequences when these kinds of things happen. You know, we've got the Army Corps of Engineers from Pillar Point, for God's sake. We've, we've dealt with all kinds of unintentional flooding when homes are being built across the street from me. And I didn't say anything because I wanted to be a good neighbor, but this is a major potential disruption. And by the way, my views are not affected by this. I live just far enough over that this isn't about my view or my particular agenda. I don't even think that I would necessarily be as affected by any flooding. But if you take that much square footage and make it subterranean, even if you can excavate it in some kind of a way that's not completely disruptive and you can make it work, it's just hard for me to imagine that much square footage, that much under the earth with the water table so high, not having consequences that we could not imagine. Now, I, I love the fact that you're vetting this and I'm sure you'll probably come to the right conclusion as to whether or not this even makes sense. And I just want to encourage you to keep doing that because I really appreciate all the due diligence being done there. And then the one other thing that concerns me is if, if Mr. Vitovich really does want to live in this neighborhood, then I, I applaud him. And if he wants to build an extra large house, I really don't have a problem with that. What I do have a problem with is I'm afraid that it's a little incongruous to look at this housing design. And I'm afraid it does. And I, people should be able to build for the most part what they want, but this does look like a clubhouse. And he is looking at a Dunes Beach project and trying to put an RV park in next door. And honestly, it's kind of hard for me to swallow that he wants to live next door to an RV park. So my BS detector, I'm afraid, is going off pretty heavy. And I know that it sounds like technically we can't keep him, once he's built this place, from doing something very different with it, under the current exceptions and exemptions. So if we are going to allow him to build, because I don't think we should be able to say no to this, I wonder if there's a way to have some kind of an exception to the exemption that keeps that from happening, that keeps it from ever being used for anything but a single family home. And I guess finally my thing would be in just the mitigation to the traffic with further development, but that's not really an issue for this because we're really just talking about this house. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, Bridgette, could you remind me of the last speaker's name? I went by too fast for you. You pronounced it so well.
Um, was it Natalie the last one or ti- or current one?
The last one, not Natalie, but the one.
This, this is Terry Dufour.
Terry, thank you.
Terry, yeah. Okay, so it looks like we have one more um speaker here and it's Byron. And she'll be able to. Okay, she'll be able to speak.
Hi.
Welcome, Byron.
Uh, actually, my name is Anju Abel. I signed up from my corporate account and I forgot that's our manager's name, Vireñado, so.
That's okay, well.
I usually use this bridge with my family also and they've asked me, who's Vireñado? And I'm like, no, that's me, Anju Abel. So I have to say, I just recently moved into Half Moon Bay on, we, I moved into twenty-eight oh one Chancalise. You heard my husband before, Brad. Uh, this community has been very welcoming. I've lived thirty years in Manhattan, Upper West Side, Lower East Side, Midwest. And Half Moon Bay has been welcoming. It's very homey. It's friendly. And what I really enjoy on my cul-de-sac every morning is Natalie's four-year-old son, John Luca, biking around and, you know, he's telling us stories. And he stands there, he looks at the field and he says, do you know the field has this, there are those birds over here? And besides John Luca, we have a lot of kids who come and play on cul-de-sac. When I look at these plants and I see trees being planted there, private path being made to the house for the car. Uh, I think I saw a gate being put there. Not only does it block my view, it takes John Luca and other children who enjoy that field immensely. And uh i- it's, it's the community. It's uh what really has pulled me into this community in the last, I would say, eight weeks that I've lived in Half Moon Bay. And I would hate to see a big mansion with gates, which looks like a clubhouse, which deters and is sending a message, stay away. Uh, I don't know, I'm just beginning to hear about this RV project, which is very heartbreaking because I've lived in the city, New York City for thirty years and I'm beginning to hear owls at night. Um, I'm, I'm hearing different birds. Um, i- it's just so much here. And I would request the council, uh, the chairman, to think very carefully, you know, bringing in trucks, uh, building material. It's not even, yes, it's very stressful for me to and my neighbors to have four constructions going non-stop. Uh, but think about our children who are trying to play here, their safety, our animals who are wandering on the street. Uh, it just doesn't feel right. So ultimately, all of you will make the right decision, but I would hate to see all of this go away. So, you know, besides the view and the trees and it's not going to be there for little John Luca to see again. Natalie, sorry, but I love your kid, you know, he's such a sweet child. He's so entertaining. So. And I would like to say thank you to all my neighbors for inviting us and bringing us into the community. It meant a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Anju. Welcome to Half Moon Bay. We're delighted to have you here. Um, let's see, uh, I think you said that was our last speaker, but I want to be sure that, oh, there's another.
Yeah, we have a, we have a, we do. Um, I have, um, so maybe the name of E. Mick. I'm not sure, um, if it's a neighbor or something. Let me just put it on and allow him to talk and introduce himself. Okay, you're on.
Sure.
Hello. Thank you so much, and I very much acknowledge the late hour. Um, I'm sorry, did you want to say something first?
No, that's fine. You're doing well. Welcome. Please don't worry about the late hour.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And Maz, uh, your background reminds me of the bluffs that we love to walk, so long may they prosper. Thank you. Um, thank you. Um, one thing that we have asked at Planning Commissions, which has always been addressed and done very kindly, thank you, is always have one point of contact for issues with construction workers and foremen and forewomen and people who are involved in the construction. Um, as a contact in case of speeding through the neighborhood or, you know, nails strewn about, just cleaning up that work site, keeping it tidy. Um, as everyone's mentioned, we, I think we have more kids and dogs than, than. So it's very racking. I'm uh from Great Washington, sorry. And we have two older children now, but they're skateboarding, biking, walking, very heavy.
Excuse me, miss. I think we're, we're losing some bandwidth. Could you just repeat that, but slowly?
Sure, sorry. Are you able to hear me now?
Much better. Thank you. Carry on.
Sorry, did I lose?
Well, we hear, we hear a little.
So sorry, um, is that a little better?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, so I would just like to sum up that, um, it's really helped when we have one person to contact in case of issues with people speeding through the neighborhood and keeping a tidy work site and, you know, dark sky, um, promises, that sort of thing. Um, we do have, I was saying, many, many dogs and children in the neighborhood. Um, skateboarding, walking, biking. Um, so just that one point of contact is very helpful in case of issues. Um, it'd be a little scary to have all these large um machines and construction personnel coming in and out um with not as much regard for um the speed limits as perhaps the residents might have. Um, so that, thank you for having that consideration of that one, you know, name or contact that we could have. Um, and also just considering that, um, you know, appreciate you taking into consideration everyone's point of view here. It's, it's really um heartwarming to hear everyone's point of view being taken seriously. So just thank you so much. Um, and please do think of our kids and dogs as this project proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do the best we can.
Thank you so much.
All right, uh, Bridgette, uh, I think it's important. All right, Bridgette, I think it's important for us to get the written comments into the record if there's not another speaker. You're, you're muted.
Yeah, I know, I have, the applicant's representative is raising his hand at this time, but that's all I have, so I don't know if we want to hold off until getting the public record.
Yeah, I would like to, I believe that our deliberation can't be complete unless we have the, you know, it's hard for us to continue without the written record being summarized for the members of the public who are listening, that's my concern.
Do you want me to read them, Jill, or do you want me to?
They're brief enough.
Okay, let me just.
Yeah, go ahead and read the most recent emails. Chair Benjamin, we received four materials before five o'clock today and we're able to send those to you and post them on the website. After that, we received some additional emails. Do you want all of them presented? A couple of them are a little bit long.
You know, not having seen them, the ones I saw were brief enough that they could go in the record, but if they're exceptionally long and you want time to chew on them, you know, we are not asking for a tome, it's hard to absorb those things audibly, even though I talk like that.
Okay, so Bridgette, now you're going to share the duties here. Bridgette, why don't you go ahead and read the most recent emails and then I will.
Read the four.
The ones that we sent earlier today, I may summarize a couple of them, I'm going to go.
Her phrase is fine.
Let me, I just, I don't want to miss them, so let me, I'm just going back to make sure that I gather them. Okay, so this one was from Kevin Mick, and I chopped this up, but McInnery, he's a resident, says as a resident of the neighborhood and owner of a home whose view slash sight lines are, will be dramatically affected, I am opposed to the current plan. The size of the home raises numerous concerns. Personally, at its size and layout, it will obstruct our view and consequently our property value. For the neighborhood, the size does not fit with the tone of the current homes. Further, the, further, the infrastructure does not accommodate for the impact of a six-bedroom home. One home adding up to eight people will add a dramatically increased traffic where over 30 kids live and create more danger, danger getting onto Highway One. If there will not be that many people residing, then why so large? Finally, as it is likely the owner will not occupy full-time and the possibility of it becoming a rental is concerning. The impact of renting such a massive home will impact, will impact have an even greater negative impact on the residential neighbors. Please review and decrease the size to match the neighborhood. Thank you, Kevin McInnery. So that was sent today at 6:40. Also have one from Ed, Edward Farren, came in at 7:24 this evening. I believe that this project cannot be voted on at this meeting since Attachment Five, the Geotech Report, was created before the project made a significant change affecting soil issues. And that is the addition of, and that addition of the basement. The report attached, Attachment Five states, no basement or pool is planned for this project. In addition, the staff report describes that soil excavation for the project would be distributed on rich agricultural land south of the project. However, staff realizes that the applicant has proposed to pave over these agricultural lands with a, with 177 space RV lot. This therefore constitute inaccurate and incomplete information being presented to the community for its consideration of the actual impacts of the project. This seems like a willful subversion of the public's right to provide information, I'm sorry, this seems like a unwillful subversion of the public's right to provide informed comment on this project. Cheers, Edward Farren. Next one is from neighbor as well, came in at 7:54 PM this evening. My name is Christopher and I'm going to chop this up as well. Davidovich, or Div, Dividitch, he lives at, I live at 2810 Alameda Avenue. My property, including the driveway, my property, including the driveway, backyard, garage and portions of my house have been often flooded due to the lack of the creek adjacent to the Dividitch property overflowing during rainstorms. During the most recent live council, city council meeting, a staff member suggested a fix for the, for this continued nuisance to be a contingency for the construction. A pipe placed in a ditch would be the simplest and most cost-effective solution. This creek fix has not, has not be included in the proposal. It should definitely be included. Christopher Dividitch, financial advisor, he lives in the area. And so then the final one that I have is from Ed, again Edward Farren, he's following up from the previous one at 7:54, he said, can the public be able to give input prior to the building permit, permit review question? It seems like other future changes, minor details are not being adequately assessed prior to the planning commission voting on this subject. Also, the coastal commission's recent input is not being given sufficient analyst and staff review. Cheers, Edward Farren. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Bridgette. Jill?
Yes, Chair Benjamin and Commissioner, I'm going to go ahead and read the four that you received earlier today. I think I can cover them each as if they were three-minute comments. The first one is from Lenny Roberts from Green foothills. It is addressed to the commission and it is for this item. Dear Chair Benjamin and Commissioners, on behalf of Green foothills, I have the following concerns. One, the revised project includes a 2,055 square foot basement excavation to elevation 27.15 feet approximately. The site has a high groundwater level as evidenced by the boring logs, referring to November 11, 2017, which encountered groundwater at a depth of 12 feet and rose to eight feet within two hours. This report was based on borings taken during the driest period of the year in 2017. There had only been one minor rainfall on October 20. During periods of heavy rain and late in the winter, much greater groundwater can be expected. Numerous sub-pumps are proposed, impacts upon the adjacent Pullman water course and the groundwater regime generally must be thoroughly evaluated. Two, the staff report states that the applicant proposes to deposit an estimated 900 cubic yards of excavated material on adjacent ag lands and horse stable properties directly to the south of the subject property. While the top two or three feet of excavated soil may potentially be classified as prime soils, the deeper soils would not. Any deposition of material greater than three feet would effectively convert prime soils on the receiving area and would therefore be inconsistent with coastal act and LCP policies requiring protection of these resources. Changes to the elevation of adjacent land could also create impacts from stormwater runoff. The applicant slash owner does not own all of the lots within the adjacent Surf Beach Plan Development Area. Any deposition of excavated materials must avoid directly or indirectly impacting land owned by other parties, including the Coastside Land Trust. Proposed location of deposition of soils should be confirmed by surveying, staking and monitoring. Green foothills questions why the required grading permit with appropriate conditions of approval is not being considered as part of this CDP approval. Tematow County Planning customarily includes grading associated excavation bill as part of its approval of a coastal development permit. Three, the proposed driveway to the garage is located in very close proximity to the mature Monterey cypress trees. Condition approval, condition of approval C-4 requires tree protection measures during construction, including construction fencing placed at the drip lines of all trees proposed for preservation. However, eventual paving of the driveway for the garage will certainly impact the root zone of these trees. The driveway plan should be revised to avoid these impacts. Thank you for consideration of these comments, Lenny Roberts, Legislative Advocate, Green foothills. The rest are shorter. This next one is an email from Mike Ferrara that was received this afternoon at 4:30. Hello, Director Ikas and Chair Benjamin, with regard to the above CDP on tonight's agenda, I wish to raise the following issues. One, although the basement concept reduces the visual impact of the project, the de-watering process raises issues regarding the dispers, disposal of the water as well as potential land subsidence. Two, the impact of the disposal of the excavated soil onto an undeveloped PUD containing prime soils is unexamined and should be the subject of a separate permitting process. Mike Ferrara, Sierra Club, Lama, Prieta's Chapter. The third of four, this is an email from, I believe, maybe a speaker earlier tonight, Vic Frolicar. We received this this afternoon at, just after two o'clock. Greetings, these are for reading at the meeting tonight. One, it looks like a commercial building, not a home, with its proximity to the owner's planned project looks inside and out more like a sales office, boutique hotel, clubhouse or entertainment center for investors and convention planners. Two, the layout seems to take advantage of the planned road on the property's south border so that connecting extensions to reach Alameda and Chamsalise to provide exit entrance to the RV park. Three, the construction hours are unreasonable, particularly for those of us who shelter or work from home. We have had continuous construction for six months, there is no need to maintain the schedule they are requesting. Four, since living here three years, I've seen the ditch by our home nearly flow over its sides and the field west of us underwater. I cannot imagine that an underground level won't affect water level during heavy rains. Sincerely, Victor Frolicar. And the last one is, we received this at 2:37, this was on Monday, we got this on the holiday, from Susan Sur, S U E R. Susan writes, I would like to submit the following comments for inclusion in the public comments related to discussion of 2,800 Chamsalise. My specific concerns are the following. One, the property has the appearance of a commercial building. This looks out of place architecturally, not just within, within our neighborhood, but within all of Half Moon Bay. It looks much more like a library or clubhouse than a home intended for personal or family use, so much so that it makes me question whether the owner is intending to use this for conducting business related to the proposed Dunes Beach development rather than as a personal residence. Two, basement square footage, a potential issue. I note that the owner intends to build a basement, which I have no objection to, but from my own personal experience, the water table may make doing that difficult. I would strongly object to the property footprint going larger than currently planned, now about 2,000 square feet separate from the garage, in the event that a basement does not prove feasible. An expansion of the above ground mass would make this an eyesore. Three, planned homes in this Stoloski subdivision are outsized and out of character with the neighborhood. I have no issues with the completed home at 2801 Chamsalise, 3,300 square feet, which integrates well into the neighborhood. However, in addition to the proposed Vidovic property, which looks out of place architecturally, the Realtor for the two undeveloped properties located at Zero Pullman has indicated these are planned to be 4,200 square feet plus 600 square, square foot in-law units. The Pullman drawings look more like personal residences than the Vidovic property, but all fall within Trulia's definition of McMansion and are outsized for the neighborhood. Actually, the Vidovic property exceeds that by quite a lot. I ask you respectfully to give some thought to helping the new developments to look like homes, appropriate for this Miramar neighborhood and to help so that they are not outsized and ostentatious. There, please do not hesitate to contact me if you require additional information. Respectfully, Susan Sur. There were some graphics which the planning commission received, they are of some of the other homes in the area that were described in that communication. I did take a little bit of liberty in reading this and skipped over a few words just to get it done more quickly.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that is the conclusion of our public testimony. If there are no other speakers or comments, or perhaps I should leave it open for the opportunity for the applicant to respond. So I'll hold off on closing the public hearing. It is now 9:26, we've been going for two hours and 26 minutes. I wonder if it would make sense for the comfort of staff and the commission and maybe the listeners at home, if we took a five-minute recess and reconvened at 9:31. Without objection, the meeting is recessed for five minutes. Staff, I want to find out if you would like to hear from Mr. Masara or you want to roll the response. Okay, I'm seeing, without objection from the commission, we'll give the applicant a chance to respond to the many comments that he received and then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Without objection. Rick?
Yes, it works.
Fantastic. Okay, Mr. Masara, if you're still with us, you have the four.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just got another email. It just came through, literally like right now at 9:32. I don't know if you want me to read that first or not.
I assume it's quite brief?
Uh, yeah, like five, maybe five sentences.
Very good.
Okay, it's from Laura LeBeire, came in at 9:32 this evening. Dear Planning Commission, we were unable to verbally comment due to connectivity issues. I, it says, we are residents of 20 years in Miramar at 306 Washington. We are not in favor of this building in our neighborhood. It is outsized and out of character in our community and includes very disruptive digging that will most, most probably create more issues in our neighborhood and the already damaged coastal trail. We do not believe this will be a single-family home and rather, it's a strategy related to the Dunes Beach proposal. The building looks like a clubhouse or corporate headquarters. What assurances and protections will exist inhabitants of Miramar have in the building of the, I'm sorry, have that this building will be a single-family residence? Thank you, Laura and Chris Cam, Cam, Camer.
Okay, thank you. And while we're hearing from Mr. Masara, I wanted to appeal to the speaker who was identified as EMC, if they could reach out to staff and give us a name, because we try to have a good record. We're respectful, I don't believe the law actually requires it, but it does it, it helps us do a better job of reaching out and being sure we understand the concerns. So please reach out with Bridgette if you would.
Yeah, also Natalie, I couldn't grab her last name as well, so if they could just email me, my email address is on the agenda, that would be greatly appreciated.
Nettie B, if you could come back to us, that would be, that would be really helpful.
Thank you.
All right, without objection. All right, uh, without objection from the commission, Mr. Masara, if you could please, uh, bear in mind that it's, uh, nine thirty five and, uh, you know, we're, we're want to hear, uh, everything you have to say. We're going to want to take into consideration when we're not stupid, which is more likely as it gets later. So you have our undivided attention.
Okay, I will, I will allow him to talk. I also wanted to mention that, uh, Mr. Ridgway, it was, it has been trying to get in and has only been able to get in audio, so I'm not sure that he does not or does want to speak, so.
Oh, all right. Well, I, I would guess that Mr. Masara is probably, um, doing, uh, traffic direction for the staff, but he'll make the decisions about who responds. Very good. So, Mr. Masara, you have the floor.
Yep, he's fine.
Uh, Commission Chair, thank you very much. We really appreciate your patience and, uh, allowing, uh, literally hours of testimony here. Um, I, I, I highly, highly recommend that you take an opportunity to hear from our architect and our engineers who I think can effectively in very short order resolve upwards of ninety percent of all of the, uh, questions, concerns and allegations that you've just, um, been privy to over the last ninety minutes. I, I think there are various baskets of issues here and, and I'll try to be brief. I think there's one whole entire basket of issues that your staff can very effectively address regarding point of contact for construction work and the time of construction schedules, other projects in the neighborhood that we have no control over, um, issues that are occurring off-site. Other projects that are not before you here tonight, um, personal dislike of the applicant and their motives. Um, I think the question regarding residential use of a residentially zoned parcel can be very easily answered and addressed by your staff and the city attorney. Uh, we're not, um, building a Toys R Us or a motorcycle shop in Missouri or any of the other uh, things that were alleged regarding clubhouses and RV parks and the rest of it. That really has nothing to do with the project tonight. And this issue of whether this house is, um, consistent with the existing community character is not only addressed in your staff report, but I think our architect, Chris Ridgway, who has designed many homes in Half Moon Bay can also talk to the fundamental residential character of this proposal. It's not out of context with the neighbors. And in fact, what you should focus on is that this project will have only twelve point eight percent lot coverage. It will only have a floor area ratio. The footprint is only twenty percent. This lot is much, much larger than the other lots. If the applicant's, um, neighbors were willing to state the size of their lot as they, uh, compare their own home size with the applicant's proposal, I think this would be very enlightening because the actual development proposal before you tonight is much less intensive than virtually the entire surrounding neighborhood. And what it means is that you get the benefit of these large setbacks along the Pullman ditch and the erosion control and percolation benefits associated with the proposed engineering. The hundred and fifty-foot open space at the western edge and side of the property. It means over twelve thousand six hundred feet of undeveloped open space and natural resources protection on this property. And a- all I would ask the neighbors is that they keep an open mind. Could they provide that sort of benefits associated with their project? Did their home include those sorts of benefits? Um, regarding the neighbors who just moved in to the brand-new house in, that is part of this very subdivision, uh, Brad, who showed photographs and his wife who talked of the very welcoming nature of this neighborhood, I can only hope that Mr. Vidovic extends the same sort of courtesies to future new neighbors that Brad and his wife have received. And it's just really unfortunate that they can't in their hearts extend that same sort of courtesy to others.
Excuse me, Mr. Masara, if you could please avoid ad hominem attacks to members of the public and address your comments to the chair.
Absolutely. So i- if, if, you know, in, in trying to, to be brief here, wh- what I really, uh, encourage the chair to do is to give the architect and the engineers a couple of minutes to answer this broad array of what actually boils down to very few questions. You know, the, the engineering and the certainty regarding the basement and how that will perform and the benefits, the obvious benefits of shrinking the footprint. That's development that the neighbors are, are never actually going to see. Uh, and that improves dramatically, uh, their views. Uh, and then, you know, the, um, the surface runoff issues and the containment of runoff on site um, as well as, um, uh, the other engineering, uh, questions associated uh, with the project itself. Um, and maybe we can set aside, you know, all of the discussions regarding the off-site projects, uh, to another date. I, I would just comment that there was a, a comment concerning, um, off-site gates being constructed as a part of this project. And I, I just want to assure the commission that that's not part of the proposal and isn't included in this project. Thank you.
Uh, all right, um, Mr. Masara, or actually Jill, I'll let you, uh, run, run traffic control here. Am I unmuted?
Bridget, do you mean Bridget? Bridget, I think, um, go ahead and my understanding is the next speaker for the applicant should be, uh, the architect, Chris Ridgway, and then we can move to the engineers.
Okay, okay. So I will.
Hi, this is, uh, Chris Ridgway, the architect for the applicant. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, Chris, welcome.
Oh, that's fantastic. Great. Um, I have you only on audio and I don't have the visuals, so. Anyhow, Bridget, if you could display the first, uh, slide, uh, that shows the overall perspective of the home.
Uh, yeah, I can pull it back. Yeah, let me, let me do that. I'll, I'll help you here, hold on.
I'll, I'll go ahead and speak by time, make things brief, and then I'll come up as I'm speaking.
Excuse me, you, you might want to move a little closer to the mic, Chris. We're having a little trouble with your modular.
I'm having a, yeah, I'm having a hard time, um, tying into you guys. Okay, can you hear me?
That's better, yes.
Great, okay. Um, we've worked hard since the last planning commission meeting in April two thousand nineteen to address the concerns by your commission and the neighbors at the hearing. One of the critical points that was stressed at the last meeting was the overall length of the house. One neighbor called it half a football field in length. In truth, the long, thin nature of the lot made a long, thin house. It was a hundred and thirty-seven foot long. But we took it to heart, um, and so we looked at, there's some way we can break this up. So we did both. We broke up the, the length of the house and we separated the house and, uh, separately into a garage. And so we've, um, also decreased a lot of view corridor across the property. We took the, uh, bedroom wing that was, uh, connecting the garage to the house and we put it into a basement. And so that really opened up the views across the property. The resulting house is fifty-nine feet long, the smallest of a garage that's twenty-three feet long. John Vidovic, the owner, met with the neighbors, uh, to the north, Joe and Carol Farrell, and their house is the only part, uh, building that's adjacent to what we're proposing. In this meeting, John and Carol discussed putting a significant percentage of the house below grade. And at a very large, uh, engineering construction expense, my client was willing to do so to accommodate the neighbor's view across this property. Result of this, uh, dramatic project modification means that we're only at twelve point eight percent of three-quarter inch lot. Whereas most of the neighboring lots are thirty percent site coverage or thirty-five. Additionally, we cut that to the second story, so it wasn't as wide, so it was only forty-five feet. We did this to give more privacy to, uh, Joan Carroll's, Farrell's house. And then we only, um, uh, opened up the view to the south. So Bridget, if you could put, um, a picture that shows the overall, um, perspective, uh, is, is that up? I can't see the screen.
I have the south elevation up currently.
Okay, there's a perspective that I did that's in color. I'll continue on and maybe you guys, uh, this is on the cover sheet. It's marked, uh, A zero for the planning commission members.
We have it.
So we designed all, yep, so we designed the house so almost all the window space away from the neighbors. Another critical fact of this home is that we're thirty feet away from the neighbor's property. Um, and most homes on that side are only five feet away. So where they're five feet away, we're over, we're thirty feet away. In addition to that, we have this large western end of the property that has been dedicated as open space. And I, once again, I can't see the screen, but Bridget, if you have a picture of the, uh, front entry perspective that's in color, you can put that up. So I did design the house so the garage was hidden in the back and tried to make the, um, the more interesting part of the house, the, a large porch along the front. And I think that's much more welcoming than also because the cul-de-sac kind of pushes into the lot, the entire house is further back than the other houses on the street. And so I think these things really mitigate having more setback, uh, having the porch, having the garage at the back. I think it makes a desirable house. I'll just briefly mention that we used real wood, real stone, natural clay fired, uh, roof on the, on the house. And then we've gotten a couple of other consultants that I'd like to welcome on next. Uh, and I think probably the next one would be the civil engineer, Kevin Weiss, followed by Dan Dykman, the Chair of Forensics, if they're still up on the line. And then after that, the landscape architect. So I wanted to really, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this, uh, on the staff's part, and I welcome any questions.
Uh, thank you, Chris. Um, Bridget, I think he was calling for, uh, the engineer next.
Yes, I will, um, take, I'll grab, uh, Kevin here just a sec. I'll go ahead and go down here.
And if you could give us his name again, please.
Kevin Wise is the civil engineer and he will be able to talk here in just a moment.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, Kevin, you're on.
Okay, great, great. Welcome. Uh, thank you, everyone, for your, your time tonight. Um, uh, one of the things that I, I really want to, can you, first of all, can everybody hear me okay? It's, it's all good?
Yes.
Great. Um, uh, what, what's happened on, on this site, uh, first of all, is, um, as, as Chris was just explaining, the, the, the site was, because of its configuration, it was, it was, it was designed as a very long structure, um, to take advantage of, uh, uh, or actually to, uh, uh, to work with the site constraints of the boundaries. Um, and after speaking with the residents, uh, Mr. Vidovic, uh, decided to open that up. And, and so the, the concern of, uh, the comments relating to, uh, a, a, a six thousand square foot commercial building or something, what you have to realize is that the footprint of this house is relatively the same of all the houses in the neighborhood. The footprint is the same. It's just there's one level of twenty-five hundred plus or minus square feet that's underground. So what, what you see out there, you, you can't just say, oh, it's a six thousand square foot house. There's two stories, just like the rest of the community. And, and so by opening that up, we were able to, number one, reduce the amount of pervious acreage, meaning how much the water runs off faster than the natural ground. Uh, so there was, there was many, uh, discussions that we've had to incorporate these types of design elements to mainly, uh, deal with the concerns of the public and, and, and how it fits, how this site fits in, in the property. Um, we've looked at all the houses around, um, and Chris did a great job. Uh, there, there is, uh, a plethora of house types in this community. So to, to be able to say that it doesn't fit is, 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 is probably not accurate because there's, there's all kinds of houses that are out there, houses with big, uh, uh, turrets and uh, A-frames and, and everything. So, um, what, what, what happened now is with the drainage, what we did is we were able to minimize the amount of pervious acreage that runs off the actual site. Okay, and, and, and we are not tying in to the Pullman ditch. We are not going near the Pullman ditch. What we're doing with the, the runoff that we created from increased roof area of the site, um, which is the same type of footprint from every other house is because we have the extra land on the site, we were able to detain any type of, of, of runoff which other houses are not able to do. So in other words, the roof runoff that goes on the property comes off of the house and goes into what, what we call a bubbler, or it's, it's a, it's a, it's a dry well type of, 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 of system where it actually percolates back into the ground. And, and then in subsequent major storms, it, it flows into the property that's to the west on, on Mr. Vidovic's property that actually permeates into the ground before it actually gets down to the bottom, to the far end of the site in its natural form. So what we're really doing is we, we were able to detain the property uh, that the runoff in, in, and mimic existing conditions so that there won't be any offflow, uh, increased by the, um, by building a, this house on the property. And this was all supported and substantiated by, um, uh, calculations, design calculations um, that was approved and reviewed, uh, by staff. Um, and, and in fact, uh, to some degree, the Pullman dish already has serious problems, as everyone knows. And so in, in some degree, it's actually counterintuitive here because when that ditch overflows right now, the, the actual flooding will go on to Mr. Vidovic's property as opposed to what people think that, like, building a basement is going to flood something downstream. That is just not accurate. That is not the way it happens and, and, uh, it's adequately engineered to, 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 to maintain that basic pattern of, 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 of hydraulic flow. Is there any, any questions on that?
Uh, we're not normally in question and answer at this point. We're happy to hear the rest of your thoughts, and when we close the hearing, we'll have a chance to think through what questions we might have for you, Mr. Weiss. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so that, that's really, uh, all I have. I, um, we, we have our geotechnical engineer to, to, to follow suit and talk more about the, um, the, the subsurface drainage and the subsurface geotechnical concerns, but for the, but, but for the, but the surface drainage, uh, that, that's how we designed the property is to, uh, basically minimize any impact offstream and, and, and it actually is, uh, designed to mimic the existing condition with certain modifications with detention facility on site. Um, and that's how we handled it. So, uh, I think that would now fit into, uh, the geotech, uh, concerns that were raised um, from that level. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Weiss.
You're welcome.
Did you say the years, oh, uh, did you say the soils engineer was available just to, uh, speak?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Bridget, could you switch to, uh, Batman? Could you please remind us of his name?
Um, yes, it is Dan Dykman, D Y C K M N, and he's the soils engineer. And he should be unmuted here shortly. There he is.
Okay, let's give it a try. Can y'all hear me okay?
You sound, you sound better than the last four speakers combined. You're coming across really well.
I've nev-, uh, yeah, I work outside a lot, so I've never been called quiet. Let's see, I, I, so let's start with a couple of things. The, one of the year people who came on tonight was asking, why don't all the other houses have basements? The reason they don't have basements is because basement construction is very expensive. It, uh, it's very common in the East Coast where you have free saw conditions, but out here we have very great weather, so there's no need to get down below the free saw level, so we don't tend to go down with basements. Uh, they're just expensive way to build things. And as you can see, that was not, uh, Mr. Vidovic's first choice. He was going to try to do it all above grade, but in trying to, uh, make the neighbors happy and keep his house down to a smaller visual size of what's above grade, but keep a square footage, he had to get into more expensive construction called a basement. Uh, it will be made out of concrete. Uh, it will be waterproofed around the outside. Uh, if they follow my recommendations, they'll also have an interior drain system so that if, uh, we find, have any cracks in the walls or anything like that can happen over time. so that if we find any cracks in the walls or anything like that can happen over time, that we will intercept that water and make sure that it doesn't ruin his belongings inside of his basement. You will notice in our report that we talk about hitting groundwater to depth of twelve and a half feet. That was because we were hitting a change in material type there. We were hitting a sandy soil as opposed to a clay soil, which allows the water to flow through it much better. But it rose a little bit in our boring, a couple of feet, because it's under pressure from further up the hillside. If we were to cut down a basement and stop before we got to that sand layer, we would not be intercepting that aquifer, we would not be interested collecting that water. And so the higher we can keep the basement, the happier I'm going to be. Right now, we've got a design where we, it's very conventional design where we try to put the drain all around the basement, make sure that it intercepts any water that's around it. That means it doesn't get anywhere close to my waterproofing and I don't have to worry about things getting inside as much. There are times when we decide if we think that that's going to be too much pumping, so we're going to be doing it too much of the year. We will actually raise the subdrain system up to a level where we think that most of the year, it's not going to be anywhere near a drain. But if it rises above a certain level, we'll have the pipes there to intercept it. And that way, we would only be intercepting that water at, you know, heavy winter rains, things like that. The placement of a basement below grade, even if it did get into the aquifer, could back up the water on the upstream side if we were not removing the water. So by having the drains, we prevent that uphill buildup of water, mounding of water on the uphill side or damming of water. That won't happen. We're taking that water that we collect from the drain, from the subdrain system, and we're taking it into its own individual replenishment system down stream, which is down slope of the basement and reintroducing it there. That way, we maintain the water table pretty much the way it is, except where we happen to have our basement. Capillary action does occur, but if we have a waterproofing blanket underneath the slab, we don't have to worry about capillary action. Capillary action is just the water pulling itself up above the groundwater table because it's able to flow through the little tubes of air in between the soils. Kind of like when the doctor pricked your finger, you got the little drop of blood on it. You put that little glass tube on it and ran up that glass tube, that's capillary action. In this case, we're not going to have an issue with it if we're putting our drain below the basement. We'll have a gravel break, which will stop that capillary action from reaching the basement slab. If we allow the water to come up a little higher, we'll simply have a water barrier below that that won't enable that moisture to penetrate up through our concrete. I think I hit, oh, the only other one I would say is, a lot of people have been talking about the timing of flows. Our subterranean flows tend to lag our rainfall. So in other words, the rainfall that comes down and lands on your property and then runs off your property happens at a certain time. We don't typically see a rise in groundwater table for hours, if not days, after that rainfall event. So when you're having a really heavy rainfall event, you're unlikely to see a high discharge from a subdrain system. So they don't they don't add directly on top of each other unless you have to have a second storm come later on. I hope I've answered all your questions I heard come through tonight, both from the commissioners as well as from the public. But if you got any questions, I'll hang around and we'll see where we go.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, Dan. There could be some questions from the commission after we close the public hearing. The last speaker, I believe, commission members, did you want to hear from the landscape engineer? Or did you want to post a public hearing as a beginner delivery? Why don't we briefly hear from the landscape engineer? I want to hear on the side of more deference to hearing what the applicant has to say.
Bruce, if you're there.
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes.
We can, Bruce, welcome.
Hi, hi there. My name is Bruce Chan, landscape architect. I just wanted to address some of the public comments. Many of the plant types have been selected from the San Mateo County book on Upland riparian planting. And none of the plants on the plant palette are on the invasive species list. Overall, the percentage of the plants being used that are California natives is about eighty percent. Let's see, as far as the existing cypress trees go, we plan to propose, we propose to keep all of them and proposed grade of the driveways within inches of the existing grade, which means that when we excavate for the driveway, there'll be minimal disturbance to the root systems. And that's throughout the entire drip lines of the trees, not just right up near the trunk. We would also have a certified arborist review the excavation as it's in progress. As to the landscape water usage, we're at about sixty percent of the allowable yearly gallons per the city's Wheeler ordinance. And I think that's about it. So if you have any questions for me later, I'll be around.
Okay, thank you very much, Bruce. Colleagues, if there are no objections, I'm going to close the public hearing. You can always open it back up if you feel like there's additional testimony we need. Okay, so that's that's closed. And I'd like to give, if you agree, staff a chance to comment on the many comments that we received and the rejoinder from the applicant and the applicant's experts. And I know we have a lot of questions. I should also note that the time is now one minute after ten o'clock. Personally, I'm a little reluctant to go forward tonight on a project at a this import at a late hour. But, you know, I'm, when we get to ten thirty, we can have another look and see how much clarity we have, if that's okay with you. All right, Jill, why don't you orchestrate your sponsors, Scott, whomever?
Everyone. Good that, just for the record, we we know that there was someone who who raised his hand again. But I think it's important to note that the the public hearing has been closed, but we just wanted to bring your attention to it. But if everyone's had their opportunity to have three minutes, this is typically the part where we move on and and get this discussion going. But if the chair would like to go otherwise, then we'll, we can accommodate it. We just wanted to draw your attention to it because it's hard to see all the things that are going on in this format.
I am I'm not the dictator. I am one member of the body. Do you want to continue with the public hearing or do you want to hear what staff has to say? I don't know what thumbs that means.
I would, personally, I'd be happy to to hear from one more public comment.
It's someone who's already spoken.
Correct, it's somebody who's already spoken. I would suggest we close the public comment period and move forward.
Well, in that case, yes, I'm with you on that.
Okay.
I'm seeing a nodding of heads and a consensus that we should move on. So we apologize to the speaker. We're trying very hard to do a good job of balancing the need for public input with respect for time limit. So please bear with us. Go ahead, Jill.
All right, so we would like to have our city engineer initiate responses because most of the discussion items of the technical nature were regarding drainage, basement, flooding, et cetera. So Maza is prepared to do that now.
Thank you, Jill. Thanks, everyone. I took some notes of, I know there was a lot that the applicants, engineers also went over. But I I took a few notes from the public comment period and I just want to touch on a few things related to the basement and groundwater portions. The first piece is the materials for the basement. So I think that was covered by Dan, concrete with waterproofing and drainage supplements. For, there was a concern about construction, groundwater during construction and dealing with that, those effects. If if during construction, groundwater is 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 dealt with, which probably would be the case for the base, for portions of the basement, at least during the excavation phase, the applicant would need to do some de-watering, which would require some baker tanks and settlement of sedimentation prior to discharge of that stormwater. And that would have to be permitted through the waterboard. So that's a separate process that they would have to go through as part of the creating current phase. There was also a little bit of a conversation about the soil placement and how will it be, how will it be moved and where will it be moved? The applicant, the original application was for the, we saw the cut amount. There was no, at the time of the plan check, there was no real discussion about where that soil would would be removed. So the assumption was that it would be off halt, which would be a considerable impact, construction-related impact. Since then, the applicant has mentioned about other locations for the potential fill. And that'll be, that'll be subject to review to see if there's any other approvals or anything of that nature needed for that. But we haven't gotten to that level of detail yet on our hand, on our end. Obviously, what Jill mentioned as far as some of the specifics that are required, such as, you know, environmental assessments on the soil and and finding, well, you know, the the makeup of it and any potential contamination, all that. And I mean, certainly, that would, that's part of, that's pretty basic requirement for any earth movement of that size. So that would be done at that point. And then as far as the construction hours, that was another piece that was brought up a couple of times. And I I understand the citizens' concerns and maybe the applicant can speak to that a little bit. Unfortunately, staff's hands are tied with that regard. That's a municipal code item that sets those particular hours. And there may be some other deviated standards as part of the subdivision that we can take a closer look at. But that would be what we would have to follow. There's not much leeway on our end. And then I have, I have a thought regarding, and when when Dan was speaking, and Dan, I appreciate you coming on and and educating us a little bit, I wish we would have connected a little sooner. If you can touch a little bit on the rain events versus groundwater piece, that would be wonderful for the commission to hear. Specifically to our area, I know there's a lot of rainfall that do like to hover. We do have moisture-rich environments. And I just want to get your opinion on on any impacts that may have on the pump pumps during rain events.
So we'll open the public hearing to get the feedback that you requested without objection from the commission.
Who was that again? I'm sorry, civil?
That would have been Mr. Weiss, oh, no, Mr. Dick, Mr. Dyckman?
Yeah, let me see, I'm just like you. Here it is, sorry.
Thank you. I'm back on, I'm hoping you can hear me again just as well.
Got you.
The, what your city engineer is talking about is that in order for the groundwater levels to rise, the water has to percolate down through the soil to get to the water table, to fill up the ground above the water table level. As we have sloping ground in this area and further up to the east of here, water which lands up slope of us is going to not only have to percolate vertically down through the ground to get into the aquifers, but then it also has to flow laterally down to the west towards the ocean to try to escape out to this, to the ocean. The timing it takes for water to, the rainwater to percolate down through the soils can be fairly long. It can take several hours to work its way down from the ground surface to an aquifer, build up the groundwater table and then start to migrate laterally. So what we tend to find is that our subdrains don't tend to operate at the same time as our peak storms. The peak storms go, the water comes off, it runs out the downsides, it runs across the lawn, it's in the ditch, it's gone in minutes, maybe even half hour. Whereas our subterranean water, if you were to go out and dig a hole there, it would bleed on for hours and hours and perhaps days afterwards. So it's a, just a very different timing that subsurface water takes compared to surface water. And hence, it's why they typically don't marry the subdrain systems into the surface drain detention systems because by the time the subsurface water gets there, they're not really concerned about the rate of flow coming off of the property. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you, we'll close the public hearing. Go ahead, Maza.
So that, yeah, that was, those were the big items that I had picked up. I don't know if there's any other specific items I I can speak to. But I think that's, those are the main areas of concern that that I, that came up during the public commentary.
I did have several, but my colleagues may have some others and I, we're not quite at the Q and A area. I want to get all the responses.
Sure, Jill, do you, if you want to hit up on the other items?
Thank you. Okay, so we have two more areas that we intend to cover and then you'll let us know what we missed. So Scott Phillips, our associate planner, is going to touch back on the planned unit development standards that were established for the Staloski Gonzales PUD because it relates to lot coverage limit, floor area ratio requirements and the basic zoning essentially that was set up when when these lots were subdivided.
Yes, so what, I don't recall what speaker mentioned this, but there was a question about whether or not the project was in conformance with the development standards. And the the main one with with this PUD is the lot coverage that no new building can exceed six thousand square foot lot coverage. So obviously, this project is less than that. And then also the the use of the property, it would require amending the PUD development standards in order to allow for commercial use of the property. And right now, it's single family. They could, you know, in the future, establish a second unit, but that's about it. So besides that, it would just be, and they would be subject to our home occupation ordinance, so.
And I should, Scott, if I could just clarify, the home occupation ordinance requires a pretty sharp limit on the number of people who visit the home, the home occupation. Are they allowed to visit at all in Soho Avenue?
At this point, no. No, no customers or visitors, that it needs to resemble a residential home.
From a residence without occupation, my guess.
That's correct, so.
Thank you. Is there more, Scott?
No, that's it, so.
Okay, Jill?
All right, so we would like to kind of walk back over, and I I may need Winter's help with this, to talk about off-site soil movement and sequoia coverage and and whether or not a coastal development permit should be required. And I think one of the things that challenged us with this project was that we learned about the real intent of where the soil could possibly go and there's some benefit to it. But it's also not fully understood how much of the soil would be appropriate for location on the ag property, which was why we put the testing condition as as part of your conditions of approval. And it very specifically expressed our concern that if the if the soils didn't all test to be appropriate, that then there would have to be another off-site location for them to be deposited, which could very well result in having to reconsider hauling emissions from truck hauling, truck hauling routes, et cetera. So we don't have details from the applicant of a hauling route even from the project site to the nearby deposit location, understanding that most of that area is under ownership control, that the applicant has access to it, but not not all of it. So lots of things came into your record tonight that were really important. And we're, as we always know, that's what this public hearing process is about. It it really informs your deliberation and considerations of projects. And we think that's important. And I wonder now if Winter has anything else that she'd like to add to to that discussion.
Sure, thanks, Jill. Yeah, the other just piece of information that I think might be helpful for consideration was, and I think this has been touched on by a couple of speakers already, as we were thinking about the existing sequel review and the single-family home exemption and the soil removal from the construction of the basement. You know, the, the idea of not having to haul soil afar distance is obviously an environmental benefit from an air quality perspective. And so I think in terms of thinking about the environmental impacts of the basement and the soil, our attention, or at least my attention, was really focused on that and the benefits of not having to truck soil long distances. And the understanding or assumption that the soil would be useful and beneficial for an existing agricultural use on neighboring properties. So it did seem like from an environmental impact perspective that this was a good solution. I think some of the, the additional discussion about the groundwater and hydrological impacts seems to be newer. And we're getting more information from the discussion there. So I just wanted to add that in terms of the thought process here in the Sequa coverage, that this was, this was sort of part of the process there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we let the commission weigh in, Jill? Okay, thank you. I appreciate that this is a, a really important project. I think the public has done an awesome job of weighing in, and I thank them all. I appreciate the applicant's attention and forbearance as we go through the process. And I'm really interested in what my colleagues on the planning commission have to say about this. I certainly have a lot of my own notes, but my thoughts will be second to yours. So noting that it's now 10:16, if we can each take a sort of a turn for a while, and if we need to go beyond 10:30, and we think that's a good idea, we will. So who would like to begin the conversation? Yes, Brian. Bring it.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Thank you, staff and applicants and, and all the members of the public for coming out on this one. And I think my concerns on this project are, I guess, somewhat related to consistency in terms of how we look at single-family homes in our community and consistency with kind of how we're applying Sequa. I'll admit, I've been the first to be sort of critical of us overusing Sequa on some single-family homes. And so I'm not necessarily a huge advocate of trying to use Sequa. But as somebody who works with Sequa and, and, you know, understanding that the basic intent of Sequa is to really allow for disclosure of a project's impacts, to inform decision-makers, and to allow for the public to be able to, to see those impacts and to be able to provide comments on it. This doesn't feel like we're there. And it actually feels like we're actually trying to build the Sequa plane as we're flying it here. So we're relying on a 2011 ISMND. That was really for the subdivision of, of, of the, of the subdivision in that area. And as I look through the, the ISMND, it's replete with language in there that no residential development is included in this, in this project description. It basically says that, you know, future, future projects, future residential developments will be evaluated under future CDP. So I could see the logic and tearing off of that. But when we start getting in and questions around hydrology and flooding and some of the issues that have been raised tonight, to me, it raises a reasonable argument that there's a potential for a significant impact that hasn't been evaluated under Sequa. Because certainly the ISMND that was adopted in 2011 did not evaluate the potential for subterranean basement development that could impact flooding. The, the belt and suspender approach of looking at the categorical, categorical exemption for a single-family home, you know, the language of the categorical exemption, that class says, you know, a single-family home in an urbanized area is exempt. I would argue that there's a reasonable argument that this is not necessarily an urbanized area. This is adjacent to an agricultural field. It's, it's, it's not an inner-city development, which has always been my belief that that's what the intent of that Sequa categorical exemption is. So, so I just have some, the, the Sequa approach here feels a little disingenuous to me, and I think there, there's some holes here. Particularly what raises concerns to me is, like I say, the basement, the potential for the soil deposit. I think while I appreciate Winter's argument and, and description that soil disposal and that could be beneficial for agricultural use, you know, the first thing that comes to my mind is, you know, there's potentially a lot of wetlands and escha across that property where we're potentially depositing soil. That seems like something we need to know as decision-makers. Where is that soil going to be deposited? And I'll just point out that we just recently, at our last meeting of April 28th, reviewed a single-family home that had a full initial study and mitigated negative declaration. That was a much smaller home, I would say, argue far fewer impacts. And some of the information that I would be looking at through a Sequa analysis is, you know, what are the, we don't have any visual renderings of, say, what this project looks like from publicly accessible open spaces or other view corridors. And we see what it looks like on-site, but we don't know what it's going to look like from the coastal trail. We don't really see what it's going to look like from Highway 1. Those are things that we have seen on other projects that have come forward to us for single-family homes and individual resource areas. So I'm really concerned that this project, which is a large project, and, and, and clearly has, you know, a bound of consultants that are working with it, is perhaps being treated with a lighter touch than some of the other single-family homes that we have dealt with that are, our applicants are really, you know, just general members of our community. Now, to get to that, just, you know, I appreciate the applicant's attorney saying that, of course, this property will be occupied full-time. This has been a dream of, of the applicant to, to live here full-time and retire here. He's a small fisherman and everything else. And I don't argue that at all, but I will just say that we heard in April 2019 from the applicant's representative that this home was only going to be used on an occasional basis, a couple of weekends a month. So that's on the record. That was the applicant's statement. So the fact that that's, I'm not sure what's changed between now and then, so I still have some concerns about that. And just lastly, you know, our April 2019 direction really encouraged that the applicant go back and collaborate with the neighbors. I heard maybe some of that happened with perhaps one or two neighbors. It seems to me the response was to just perhaps underground some of the, the, the project, which I'm not necessarily saying that that's a bad thing. But as I understand it, currently, the GeoTech report doesn't include that basement facility. And we heard from a number, number of other neighbors that I didn't necessarily feel it, that I'd heard that that outreach had, had happened. So, so I'm not sure that the direction that we had provided before had really been embraced. So, so I have some real concerns just about us moving this forward, that it's not consistent with how we've treated other single-family homes recently, previously, that there are real legitimate Sequa concerns, reasonable foreseeable impacts, and that, that do require more analysis for us as decision-makers and the public to really understand the full breadth of the hydrology, the biology, and the aesthetics concerns primarily. So those are my comments at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. Let's see. I wonder if Sarah would like to weigh in. I see a hand.
Thank you. So I would just like to, kind of building on Commissioner Holt's comments, I, I had very similar Sequa concerns. And I do think, I would also like to add that I know that the exception for the exemption that pertains to single-family homes, to residences, it, it speaks of unusual circumstances. And so I really think that we're not, you know, the, what, what we're relying on in terms of using that exemption would be a typical development. And I just don't, if you look at what's in our coast side, this kind of subterranean development is not typical. So I agree, I feel like we're, and I, I feel very uncomfortable kind of right now with how things are proceeding. That analogy to like building the plane as we're on it is feeling very much how, I, I do not think that we're, we have the kind of addressed Sequa and we're providing the transparent opportunity for review that is needed for this. I don't feel like I have the information or the public, other members of the public have that information needed. I also, just, just to be clear, you know, I don't want to, I, I very strongly support and agree with what Commissioner Holt said, so I'm not going to repeat all those other things. But I do want to point out another thing is that I feel like we're being put in a position in terms of reviewing this project, of deciding what's going to happen with 900 cubic yards with no real review or opportu, like, we don't have a plan. So we, we know nothing, and even if, you know, let's, I, you know, I had the same issue that I think was raised in the public comment by Lenny Roberts, is that not all of the soil is actually prime soil. And so you can't just go and place it on a, you know, agricultural field and call it done. You actually can only do a small portion of that. And so let's say it is, you know, best-case scenario, like three feet you can put down there, you still have 700 cubic yards of soil you've got to put somewhere. And even if you're going to put it onto the property exterior, you got to have area to, to blend it and separate, and you got to have space to test it before you send it over. There's a lot of logistics and space that would be needed for that. And, and then frankly, the amount of what it would take to off-haul it is upwards of like, you know, I don't know, 80 trucks. Because they can't use large-size dump trucks in the smaller neighborhoods. They're going to have to use smaller dump trucks, which just means is going to be, my estimate is like 80 dump trucks worth, minimum, minimum. And I think that there is a legitimate concern about the, the length of time and the noise that would be generated from all of this, that it would be harmful to the residents of the, this neighborhood. I realize we don't have the capacity to act on changing hours, et cetera, but I'm just saying that I think that this is the, what's being proposed scares me in terms of what impacts during construction even that it could have. And then lastly, I really think that, that the, whatever, you know, next review can't, I, I, I hear what Dan was saying, the, the geotechnical engineer, about removing the water from around the basement. But it doesn't change the fact that you're putting in essentially a big barrier underground. And, and you're putting it next to the spot, like a drainage that's supposed to provide that safe drainage, which it already apparently does not, for a, a large, you know, a neighborhood, a community. And I just think that it was irresponsible of, of us to move forward with something without better, without having that hydrology and that analysis clearly laid out. And, you know, it, it was clear, obviously, from Maz's, your comments, that you, you know, would have appreciated some further interaction, actually, leading up to this, that, that there's still questions out there on your end. And that's not, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just saying that I don't think we're ready by any means. This is, this is still got a lot of issues that need to be addressed to make it a viable project. But yeah, I just, there's a couple of things, you know, the Sequa, and also I do think that we are being put in a position of having to make a decision about what happens, like about okaying a project without knowing viably what's going to happen with the excavated material. And it's no trivial deal to, you know, the 900 cubic yards is quite a lot of material. So I think that we can't just go forward with a decision about that, frankly.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Rick?
Thank you. So first of all, I would like to thank the applicant for going through this process and bringing the expert witnesses to our hearing and helping to inform all of us on the process. To start with the design aspects of the project, I agree with city staff that this project conforms with residential design guidelines. I provided some editorial feedback on those guidelines, so I, I agree with that. The neighbors may disagree about the look of the project, that it may appear to them to be a clubhouse. Looking at the design, it seems like a rather large house. And it's, it's difficult to argue that this is commercial office space. That said, I would be interested if there's possibility in the future to foreclose any commercial use of the property through deed restriction or something like that. Because from a public perspective, if it walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. So I, I just think we need to dig into that a little bit more and, and address the public's legitimate concerns. I will say that I'm a little surprised at the, the nature of the response from the neighbors, given the dialogue that has apparently happened. I, I certainly, Chris Ridgeway designed my house. I've been through the planning process here in Half Moon Bay and had neighbors show up with pitchforks and torches at my own planning commission meeting. And through hard work and communication, I got my neighbors on board with our project. So I would encourage a little elbow grease and work on the communication with the neighbors, because apparently people have some legitimate concerns about the project. I agree, so we've talked about soil, we've talked about water. I agree with both Brian and, and, sorry, yeah, with Brian and Sarah's comments with respect to those. I would like to address the tree and figure out what happened there. We've seen a number of projects where people jump the gun and start doing things in Half Moon Bay, and there's no accountability there. So I'd like to get an understanding what happened with the tree. Those are my comments.
Rick, Rick, I apologize for interrupting you. I need a point of order. It is now 10:31. I'm remiss by one minute already. I want to be sure we get all of your comments and, and give Steve a chance. I wouldn't mind getting one of my own tonight. Do we have a motion to extend the meeting?
I'll move the extend.
All right, and is there a second?
Second. Can I?
Okay.
I interrupt just for one second. If we could just pause for like two minutes. PCT just needs to change a reel real quick for recording purposes, and then they'll give me a heads up.
Very good. Without objection, we are recessed for two minutes.
Are you in for me?
Sarah, do you want to continue the meeting for 30 minutes?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Thank you. And, okay with the second?
Second.
Barring any objection, we'll continue the meeting. Are there any objections? All right, we are, we're agreed to continue until 11:04. Please continue, Rick. I apologize for the interruption.
No, that's okay. It's good timing so that we could get everything recorded. So I'll back up and just say that from a planning perspective, from a design perspective, the project satisfies my concerns from architectural review perspective. I feel like it complies with the design standards of the city. I agree with the concerns raised about the soil and the water, and would like to make sure that we figure out what happened with the tree. Going back to Sequa 153002, I think that given the concerns that have been raised by the neighbors and given that just about every 10 years or so, we have massive rainfalls in the city of Half Moon Bay, I can attest to the fact in 2006, we had about 30 days of rain in a row. You have situations where the water table rises significantly. So I, I, I do think that there are reasonable possibility that you can have an unusual impact, especially given some of the concerns that were raised by the neighbors. I, I, I do have to say though, from a design perspective, I really appreciate the feedback that they've incorporated in. They've tried to reduce the scale of the project. I think they've done a commendable job there. It's, it's a little tall, and some people may poke at the design, but I think it's, it's, it's a good improvement over where we were at before. There's a project that I believe is 170 Correios or 400 Ocean around that neighborhood that was recently completed in the last few years. I think city staff knows the project I'm referring to. I don't need to name names here. But that project is similarly a very large project that has a subterranean parking structure built into it. And it looks like a very small house and fits into the neighborhood. And I think that's, it's an example of what And I think that's, it's an example of what the neighbors might hope for, but I don't know if it's realistic to expect that they will get that. I just pointed out as an example. Those are, that is the extent of my feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And I appreciate your summary that you were agreeing with the new literating those. That's going to give us better use of our 30 minutes. Steve, I'm saving the best for last, buddy. It's you.
Thank you, Jimmy. I applaud the applicant and his team and city staff for working together on the improvements that have been made to this project since April of last year. It, the house of this size that sits out by itself, obviously invites scrutiny that is maybe more intense than in some other settings. And it's obviously a very subjective thing, how people feel, how neighbors feel when they, they look at the plans for that. I wish I had more confidence in my own architectural review expertise. I imagine that one could drive around Ocean Colony and see some, some fronts of houses that are not too far distant from what is proposed here. But I also, I also understand how the neighbors could quite sincerely feel that it doesn't fit in that neighborhood. I have, I have a lot of questions and I don't know whether it's feasible to, I don't know whether it's wise for me to embark on an exhaustive list of them, given our short time, but.
We'd like to hear.
I wanted, I wanted to ask two sort of process oriented questions first off. And just to see, just to make sure I know where we're going. But I wanted to ask of staff whether either of these two scenarios suggests that, that we may or may not be on the right track with, with this process. The first is the, the input from Coastal Commission that has been alluded to about the willows and potential wetlands nearby. Is that something that can be worked on the, on the periphery of our process here? Or is it potentially on the critical path? And the same question for the, the flaw in the geotechnical report that Mr. Ferran during public comment mentioned in the, in the, in email sent to staff. Are these, are these things that are going to trip up our process right now? Or should we, we continue with faith that those are not showstoppers?
I'll touch on the, the second piece. So my understanding is that the applicant's supplemental geotechnical report addressed the concerns with the addition of what was being proposed tonight, of the basement and the subdrain piece. So I wasn't quite sure what that, where that comment was coming from. I just wanted to make that clear that I did feel that they, that it was addressed in that second piece. And obviously, that's still, it can be subjective, but I felt that it was addressed in, in at least that format.
Regarding the Coastal Commission comments, our Coastal Commission staff comments, we intend to reach out to them, provide them more information and get a better sense of the concerns they may have, you know, after digesting that information. So in, like Joe mentioned, the synopsis of all the reports that we compiled for along Pullman Water Course, that's part of what we're going to provide them with. So, so yet to be determined.
All right. So that's, that will progress. Okay, I, my, if I can continue then with comments and questions. Like the, the main problem I have right now is very congruent with what Commissioners Holt and Polgar brought up about the soil dispersal plan, which is maybe not really a plan yet. But I take to heart what Lenny Roberts, in her public comment, pointed out, which is that the quality of the soil to be excavated for the basement may well vary in its profile as you, as you go down. And as Sarah mentioned, having the facilities on site to adequately test and parse out and appropriately disperse different packets of soils, depending on what the testing environment is, is, is a challenge that I doubt that we've, we've asked an applicant to go through in the past. And, and I do worry that if some or much of that soil is to be disposed of elsewhere, it adds a very big impact to the, to the neighbors who surround there. So I, I wish that we had or could, could find a way to work a more real plan for testing and a more concrete plan for testing and disposing of that soil before we, before we make a decision on whether the basement scenario makes sense. Other, other things, I walked around on that site yesterday. I estimated that the, the drip line of the easternmost tall cypress trees is about six to eight feet from the nearest story poles. So I'm curious, I applaud the intent to protect all those moderate cypress. I'm curious how the construction of the house and ultimately the driveway can be consistent with, with, with those distances. I'm still, I know that we've spent a lot of time on this and the, and the two engineers talked about it, but I'm still, I guess I'm still concerned to know more about the, the, the resolution of this underground dam effect that the basement is likely to have there. I, I understand the model in theory. It, and I guess I, I guess we have to defer to our engineering department to vet if that's really seems adequate in this, in this environment, given the, given how wet it can be out there. I'll stop there for now, Jimmy.
All right. Thank you, colleagues. I'll not repeat the things that you've said, although I'd say I, I certainly agree with very many of them. And I appreciate your thoughtful perspective. You are, you are worthy of a city like Half Moon Bay. We appreciate it. I brought my own set of concerns as well, though, that maybe haven't come up yet. I'd like to speak more generally about the geomorphology. I think that, you know, we've talked about flooding, we've talked about subsurface flows. I think I'm going to put a, maybe a little sharper point on some of your comments to point out that the, the, the analysis of the, of the flows in a project like this depend on what your models do with inputs. And if you, if we start with inputs that underestimate where the water table is, say for example, by making a measurement during a dry period, when the changes in surface flows might be dramatically different during the rainy part of the year or late in the year. We're going to get very different results. And, you know, this is the data we had to work with when the project came to us. But the public has brought us a substantial amount of new information that I think you didn't have, staff, and we certainly didn't have, that suggests that the operation of the underground surface flows is quite different. And if it's that close, it probably supplements the sheet flow as well. And so I am questioning the, the, I guess I feel like there's a need to validate the way the, the flows run with measurements during a wetter winter period, late in the winter. That's when we're going to see, that's when this system is going to be under stress. And that's when we're going to find out whether we're creating the kinds of impediments to velocity and we built the system in a way that it can do the things that it needs to do. And I was, I will say, encouraged by the clarification from the civil engineer, that was Mr. Weiss, I believe. It said that rather than the water eventually bubbling out somewhere near Pullman and finding its way into Pullman, that it was going to sheet flow out to the west. Now, I don't know enough about how the water flows once it's in that area. But I want to be abundantly clear that we should be being sure, really sure, that we have mitigation and monitoring that reflects whatever design we come up with for this project is not going to increase the flows in that, in that drainage, because it's vulnerable. It's vulnerable to flooding, it's vulnerable to erosion. And as several speakers pointed out, and you well know, it is vulnerable to upcutting and has placed the state beach access to parking at risk. So that's a big deal. And understanding how that will work is going to be really important. Many of the speakers spoke about the noise of construction. And while at one level, I understand the subdivision code and what it says about what, when we can regulate, we also have as a tool CEQA. And CEQA allow, it has a category associated with temporary impacts. And it doesn't just mean the impacts of this project. It, it addresses, it contemplates cumulative impacts. And what we heard from the members of the public is that they're getting noise from a lot of different places right now. It's not just about this project. This is one more. I can empathize with them because I lived next to the sand plant in the mid 90s when they were putting in steel pilings for many months and they operated for long periods. It, it can be really tough. And while we as property owners cannot exercise arbitrary control over what our neighbors, you know, choose to do with their land and when, I think we can be sensitive to the cumulative impact of all of those projects. And that seems to me to be another category, along with the new information about subsurface flows and the new reality of a basement that was not contemplated when the ISMD for the subdivision came forward, as Brian aptly pointed out. I think that another aspect of this that needs to be understood with pumping is the risk of subsidence. This is a, an issue that could have significant adverse impacts, not, not only on the applicant's land, but on land around it. So having a clear understanding of how those pumps are going to operate, where they're situated, how low, you know, you know, how much water they would be pumping, and mitigation and monitoring that's going to let us identify and resolve problems before it becomes a source of damage to the neighbors. You know, maybe that's in the Geotech Report and I missed it. But that seems to me to be very, very important to understand that we're not proposing injurious development. I'd like to, yeah, especially with the water table. If we, if we believe the water table is higher and we suggest a, an increased level of pumping and our model is wrong and the water table is lower, that's when subsidence becomes a hazard. So we've got several factors that we need to balance here. And I feel like more data, a clear understanding of how we can be adaptive to the circumstances that are presented in real time as the pumps operate. And I, I like to believe that, I think one of the applicants said their pumps were running a lot. I don't have one, so I don't know how noisy they are. I don't know how much vibration they put forward. But I assume that there's some scale to the amount of water that's being moved. And if I were living close to this, I'd probably want to have clarity on what the volume levels and vibrations would be. Another category of CEQA worth considering that wouldn't have been contemplated in an era where there were no basements involved. I'd like to speak to, also to the export, the potential export of soils to the land to the south. I, I value that agriculture. And I understand that if the soils could somehow be qualified, that they would deliver some agricultural value. But there's another angle on this that really troubles me. And that is that the Coastal Act and our local coastal program include the movement of solid matter, including soils, as a form of development. And our local coastal program is quite clear that development in a, in a, in this budget of development without a specific plan is not permitted. One way to try to address that or consider that I, I looked at was whether it could be exempt from consideration, because not all development requires coastal development. There's a section of 18.20 that gives a short list of things that don't have to be permitted. And I could not find one that fit. The closest I could get was routine maintenance that is necessary for the ongoing operation of an existing use. And it is true that this is an agricultural use. But it is not true that the movement of this soil onto that land is necessary. It's been doing just fine without that soil for a long time. If they had a pump that had failed and it needed to be replaced, I get it. They have to dig, they have to bring in something, they have to fill. I get it. This is not like that. This is a different quality of development. And in my opinion, it doesn't, it doesn't rise to the threshold that makes that exemption available. And, you know, reasonable people might have other points of view about that. But that's, after thinking about it all day, that's kind of where I came down. So I think those were my comments. Has anybody reloaded and wanted to talk more?
I would make a motion that we move to continue this indefinitely.
I second the motion.
Okay. If there are no other comments, no other discussion on the motion, then why don't we get a, staff, do you feel like you have clarity of action for where to go with this based on a continuance? And Brian, is that to a date uncertain, did you say?
That is to a date uncertain, as staff is able to respond to the questions that we've raised.
Okay, I'm seeing staff, it looks like they have clarity. No other discussion. We'll poll vote, please.
Okay. Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruddock?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Yes, thank you very much.
Five zero.
That's unanimous and I appreciate it. So we have another 10 minutes. We have a capital improvement item to discuss. I wonder whether it's the will of the commission or staff feels that this is, if this is on the critical path, it's on the critical path. So we're probably going to need more than 10 minutes to do this, going to have a motion to extend the meeting a bit longer.
I'll move that we extend to, do you think we get it done by 11:15?
11:15. Is there a second?
11:15.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Without objection, we'll extend to 11:15. So why don't we go forward with the capital improvement item? And I assume this is Jill's.
City engineer is going to present this to you tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry, Maz. Go for it. My bad. We can't hear you.
Maz, your, your system isn't working. We can't hear you.
But there's voice coming from there, so it's weird. Sound.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. All right, let me just share this PowerPoint and then we'll just get started. Can everybody see?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So tonight, we're here to present the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2021. Tonight, we have two things for, for, as part of the recommendation. One is to review the list, which we'll go to in a little bit of a detail soon. And then the second would be to adopt the resolution with findings that the proposed 2021 capital projects contained in the five-year plan of the CIP are consistent with the city general plan. So tonight, I'll just go over a brief background, a quick fiscal year 1920 CIP update, a couple of project highlights. a couple of project highlights, and then we'll just jump right into the programs and projects list to see if there's any questions or concerns. So as far as the background, I just want to put this into context as far as what the city has has had to deal with. It's been tale of two cities between the pre-COVID era and the COVID response. There was obviously an impact, economic impact as well as the social impact to everyone. For as far as the CIP specifically, pre-COVID, we had a budget of fifteen and a half million dollars with three million of general fund contribution. It consisted of forty-six programs and projects, and seventeen of those projects were scheduled for completion plus the smaller program efforts for for the fiscal year. As part of the response and the reduced projections for funding and general funds, the CIP for nineteen twenty was was trimmed by one point eight million. So of that three million of general fund contributions, only one point two was to remain. And eight, and as a as a result of that, eight projects were delayed or postponed. The projects that we were able to complete, a lot of this was prior to the March twenty twenty fund that we've all been dealing with. The Cali Highway One drainage project is pictured there. We worked on a number of facilities, Ted Attacock, as well as Ocean View Park. We were able to address some access to our coastal trail and our beaches with the stair repair at Canyada Verde Creek, as well as the Poplar Beach Vertical Access improvements that are ongoing right now and will be finishing up in the next week or so. We also spend a good amount of time in our sanitary sewer infrastructure, doing point repairs and rehabbing manholes, which help with ionization in of stormwater and groundwater infiltration intrusion. So a few project highlights, just wanted to mention some of the major projects that we've been working on, the Ocean Colony Pump Station Project and force man improvements. This project has been in the works for a couple of years now. It's a little complicated with dealing with a number of property owners, and it's a relatively large project. The good news on this one was at the last city council meeting, we were, the council was able to award a contract to Ranger Pipelines. The estimate came in, the bid came in quite low compared to the estimate. We were about twenty percent below the engineer's estimate, which was amazing. So we're happy to be fully moving forward with that project as we wrap up contract documents. The Poplar Vertical Access, this is an older picture, it's, the steps have been completed to at this point. But this project was another great one. We were able to take advantage of the the fact that a lot of folks for the last couple of months haven't been able to utilize the beach due to some of the closures. And we ended up moving forward with this construction. At this point, today, they placed the last bits of steel at the bottom end of the screen. You can kind of see where the the borries were completed. So that's, so this project is coming along and we've got another, about another week or so before this is wrapped up. The Highway One South Safety and Operational Improvement Projects is another one we've been working on for the last couple of years. This project is moving towards construction. The project is currently out to bid with with the advertisement period ending on June fourth. And the second meeting in city in June will be taken out of the city council for hopefully a word of a contract for that project. This is another one that's been in the on the in the process for a number of years with a lot of Caltrans involvement with the fact that it's on the state highway system as well as dealing with a lot of the local patterns of travel in this area. So with that, we've, we're moving forward with with the bidding. And we should be having, actually PG&E coming back out to complete the undergrounding of the Highway One overhead lines. There's the high voltage line and the communication line will be put underground. But due to the COVID nineteen response, we had to delay those improvements until the shelter in place and construction was, restrictions were lifted a little bit. But that project is moving forward and I'm happy to report that we should be under contract in the next couple of weeks. The Highway One Safety and Operational Improvement Projects North is another project the Planning Commission has seen in the past. This project is continuing to move forward with the design. We had to pause some of the exploratory work that was was happening as part of the design effort due to the pandemic. We're slowly coming back online with that. We are not anticipating any major impact to the to this particular schedule quite yet. We will be moving forward with the design. And when we have the next set of plans, we'll be, our plan is, we're actually going to be doing a a public meeting to inform folks. A lot of people have been interested in this project. It touches a lot of different homes and neighborhoods. And so we'll be having that next public meeting to to get get more feedback and kind of to talk and go through some of the project elements that that we've been working on till then. And then the last project I'm just going to highlight a little bit is the Poplar Complete Streets Project. Another another project that we've been working on diligently over the last year or so. We've had a number of community meetings. Unfortunately, as part of the, as part of our budget changes, this project has been paused temporarily. We are wrapping up a few items, one item being the field review meeting with Caltrans to discuss the the NEPA. This prize, just a little bit of background, this project has federal funding as part of the OPEC two fund sources. And that grant requires us to go through NEPA as well as Sequel. So what we are going to do next is have that sit-down meeting with Caltrans. It'll be remote to go over their concerns with NEPA. We will finalize our plan for the biolog, for the environmental review. And then this project will be paused and and we're anticipating to go back to city council funding in mid-year update, which would be towards the end of this calendar year. So with that, I'm going to jump right into the the projects list that we have as part of the staff report. I won't go through these in great detail. We have, we have broken them out into the different projects and programs and have listed some of the, some of the general plan and LCB consistency as far as well as other notes as part of that. So this is a two-page, and we can kind of go back and forth with this, but this kind of has all the lists of the projects. It's been reduced from previous years due to the response. This project, we're looking at twenty-three projects as part of the as part of the list as well as for mid-year. So those twenty-seven projects are what you're looking at on this on this list here. With that, I'll, I have the recommendation on the screen, but that's the end of the presentation. And I'm happy to take any questions and and answer them as best as I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maz. Colleagues, do you have any questions or or discussion? Let's start with questions, any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing item. And so we need to open the public hearing. So I'm now opening the public hearing. I'm still looking at the, okay, the recommendations are on the screen. Is Bridget, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item?
I see none.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the to the commission. Does anybody have any thoughts about this item? If not, may I have a motion?
Well, I just say, I just want to say, I just want to compliment Maz and and just all the staff of being able to keep moving capital projects forward during this time. I think, you know, capital projects are, these projects of this size are so important to be able to, you know, keep going and position ourselves for grants or any stimulus funds or anything that might come out of this whole COVID nineteen situation. And they're just, you know, important job generators for for people who work in the trades and and everything else. So I think our capital project program is really important to to our local economy and to our, you know, sustainability and to our infrastructure and to everything else. So thank you, Maz.
And I'd like to second that.
Okay, thank you both, and I apologize, I couldn't see i- if any hands went up. Bridget, you're going to have to be in my eyes. Are there any members of the commission who wanted to speak to discuss this? Oh, yes, now I can see you, Sarah.
I I was just saying, I just wanted to say, hear, hear to what Commissioner Holt said. I very much agree and thank them, that's tremendous work.
Likewise, it's a, it's an important, it's important to keep the work of the city moving forward. And I know it's not easy during these tough times, so thank you. And to the whole city staff.
Anything from you, Steve?
No, just, you know, good work in these stressful times. My my hat is off to everyone at staff.
Yeah, this is one of those times where everyone complains about the projects that are not on the docket. You've had to push them all, a lot of them out further. And, you know, for once, instead of bellyaching about that, I think you're getting a unanimous take from the commission. Nice work. We miss the other projects, not just the ones that were on there, but the ones that were never on there. And we're looking forward to the day that they will all show up. I know they're coming. And with that, could I have a motion for the resolution next to the order, please?
I'll move that we move the resolution.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ruddock, I believe. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Polgar? Yes. Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruddock?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Another unanimous decision. All right, thank you. Let's move on to the director's report in the seven minutes we have. Let's see what we can do. Take your time, Jill, no pressure.
No problem, thank you and thank you for tonight. We really appreciate your hard work on all of your heavy agenda items. And we're looking ahead to your June twenty-third meeting. We're going to continue on the one meeting a month. We're sorry about your late packet. We did get late materials, which which made one of the items later than the rest. So we appreciate that you had a lot to work through. So we'll see you again on June twenty-third, probably with a project from PG&E. It's a pipeline project along Highway ninety-two. And it's been under a Sequel review. So we'll get that Sequel document to you by the end of the week so that you can get the bulk of your reading done well in advance of the rest of the packet materials. We may have some other items along with it, and we're doing our best to pull that together. Just speaking of which, and it does relate to what our city engineer just presented, staff has been doing a lot of work on projects that have Sequel review. They're very workload intense, and several of them are actually city projects, including Carter Park as well as the Main Street Bridge. And there's, there's a number of other projects going on. So you will be seeing all of these laying out over the year. Wave Press Phase Two Trail Extension Project is also in review with the city. The biological report was updated. I know Scott's a project planner, he had that circulated recently. He has a lot of work going on with that. He also happens to have a couple houses that you're going to see that have environmental interests on them. One of them is on Terrace Avenue, it backs up to Beechwood. The other is on Champs Elysees near the Guerrero Wetlands. So there's, there's just a lot of activity on some challenging sites that you will, you will be seeing. I had a hearing a few weeks ago, and one of the items, there were four items. Two were administrative approvals and they're concluded. One was a hearing that was concluded and another one I continued. And we've been working with an applicant and neighbors, and we're hoping to have a conclusion to that item by the end of the week. We will let you know if there's an appeal. But we've been working really hard on coming to a good conclusion. And we'll report out to you once that that's settled out because it's the kind of thing where I like to get feedback from the commission on calibrating the decisions that we make at the director level and make sure that we're we're within the the realm of your comfort. Council's really focused, of course, on budget and current conditions of the community. And we understand that there's going to be a lot of concern about how active this holiday weekend was. I'm not prepared to go into that. I just want to reassure you that city manager is taking it very seriously. And he's coordinating with all the folks who who should be involved, including state parks and county and sheriff and everyone else who has given their input. And in fact, the Coastal Commission staff reached out to us today because they're hearing from residents as well. And city managers offered to work with them too. So just want you to know that we're absolutely in the loop and doing the part that the city should be working on. We are very busy again in our shop with development proposals. The May fourth shelter order, which of course has now been amended even more, but that shelter order opened up construction. And we were deluged with calls and restarting projects and inspections, which are mostly done remotely. It's really challenging work. I'm, again, still very proud of staff and how how much they have to put into it to manage the logistics of it. We've just installed a planned drop-off tube. It's a box, it's a metal, a big metal tube by our back door at City Hall so that we can have contactless conveyance of plans with our applicants when they aren't able to submit them digitally. We're, we're trying to do everything we can to be open for business and accommodating what needs to get done and what can be done at this time. We, we do have some trouble with coordination, and we're doubling down on just needing more and more and more. I think you saw a little bit of that tonight. And these are complex projects. We are used to working together in close quarters. I actually call City Hall the dorm because we, we miss it. We, we eat together, we are together all the time, and we know what's going on. And it, there's a lot of osmosis with our work. And so having to really deliberately coordinate without having that ongoing collaboration is is challenging. And we will keep working on it. We appreciate your patience and feedback, guidance around that because we, we think we're going to be in this mode for some time, even if we are starting to come back to City Hall. Some of us are working here, I'm here, I need to be in town. It's really important for my work to be present here. And I do want to reassure you, Brittany and I, with winter support, are working very hard on getting the land use plan back to you. It's what we can fit in when we can, and we've made a lot of progress over the last few weeks. So we're really, really happy to tell you that. And I use it all the time, so thank you, and it's nice to see you all.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the planning director? Seeing none, is there, are there any planning commission communications that you'd like to share?
Just one, I'm sure you've heard the feedback, but while you finished the project for vertical access to Poplar Beach, could you try to keep the idiots from killing themselves? Lots of people are running up and down those steps, and it's not always easy. But but I do appreciate the fact that you guys are ahead of schedule, so thank you for that.
Sure, hope that's the three sixteen series stainless steel. Yes, Brian?
So I just wanted to mention, as part of my, as part of my work, we've partnered with University of California, San Francisco, their Nature and Health Institute, and looking at how people can best recreate outdoors safely and sort of public health guidance on how to recreate. They did three different series, and it was sponsored by Together Bay Area, which is the former Bay Area Open Space Council, three different webinars that basically Three different webinars that basically spanned the gamut of, you know, how can park employees work best outdoors? How can the, what's the real risk to the public outdoors? You know, so is it, what is the real danger of crossing people on a path? And, you know, some of these types of things, really interesting information. I'd be happy to share that with everybody, but it's just a lot of a lot of thought going into it from people, both from the parks world, but also the public health world about really recognizing that getting out to nature is an essential service and something that we're all blessed to have access to here in Hefman Bay. But something that we all need to recognize that not everybody else has. And there's ways to be able to accommodate that safely. So I'd be, I'll circulate that around everybody, maybe it'll be.
Yeah, please do, please do, Brian.
Thank you very much, Brian. Any other planning commission communications? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
They move, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned, thank you very much and good night.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you, good night.
Be well.